Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 12th, 2024, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We are very happy to see you all here today. We have a very full agenda today, so we are going to try to go through it as quickly as possible. That being said, I now call the meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that if anybody in the audience is recording this meeting, to please stand up and identify yourself with your name and your city of residence. I don't see any, nobody records anymore because FATV does the job before us, which is lovely. At this time, we're going to have Mr. Talbot lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Talbot.
Play ball.
All right. At this time, I'd ask that you all just check your electronic devices to make sure they're in silent mode. I have done so as well, so that we may all enjoy each other's company uninterrupted. All right. So we are going to call the first matter on the agenda, but we are not going to open a public hearing on it tonight. This is ZBA 24-2, Spectrum Health Systems, Inc., 7280 Franklin Road. This is an appeal to overrule the building commissioner's decision under Section 181.9222 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance that they are required to seek a special permit and site plan approval for the medication-assisted therapy clinic use of the subject property due to the fact that Spectrum's proposed use qualifies as an educational use exempted under Section 181.3 of the Use Regulations. So, I am aware that there have been, there is, of course, a lot of public interest in this matter, and this matter has been scheduled on the agenda for March 12th and March 14th for a few weeks now, and then the agenda was amended and posted on Friday, March the 8th, to reflect the fact that we have received an extension agreement from the applicant. So, this board has a certain deadline within which we have to start a hearing, and if we do not comply with that deadline, there's the possibility that we may be subject to something called constructive allowance, which means that the petition gets approved without our participation. That deadline fell tomorrow for this applicant. What is needed to extend it is a written agreement, signed by the applicant and the city and filed with the city clerk. That agreement was requested some time ago. It did not come until the end of last week. Once it came, the agenda was amended. It's the feeling of the chair that, due to the public's interest in participation and our, I think, 13 or 14 item agenda tonight, there is not adequate time to discuss this matter tonight. I want to make sure that both the applicant and the public have an adequate chance to comment on this matter. So, that is why that was, that is, was removed from today's agenda, or the extension was noted. That is why we are not going to open the hearing today, because the hearing will be opened on Thursday, and due to the fact that we are not opening the hearing, we are not taking public comment on this matter, because we don't want to have the hearing opened without the applicant here. I hope that clarifies that for everybody, and I am pleased that the applicant did eventually concede to our request, so that we could have adequate time and space to discuss that with the public. All right. So we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification.
Yes.
It's Thursday at 6:00 back here.
Thursday at 6:00 PM in this location, and just, I will remind everybody that you are welcome to submit written public comments by email to the Building Department, and those will be read at the meeting. You are welcome to view the meeting remotely or in person. If you're going to do it remotely, you may view it on FATV, whether online or otherwise through their cable channel. And if you want to participate remotely, there is a link for remote participation in the agenda, correct Mercedes? The remote participation link?
If not, I'm down there.
You email you. So this is stated on the agenda for both today and Thursday, but if you want to comment remotely on that matter, email Mercedes Mata at the Building Department, and she will give you a link to participate remotely, and we will allow people to make comment remotely if they don't wish to come down here. I think that's everything I can clarify, right? Okay. Again, 6:00 PM. So, I am not going to open the public hearing, but what I will do, because I know that people probably came here to make sure that they had the right to comment, just a question.
Will they be read here? You said if anybody who submits it, it will should read here, it will be read out loud at the hearing?
That was my question.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I do appreciate everybody coming and participating in their local government. So, from 6:05 to 6:30, we have four matters on the agenda that are either reviews or continuances, and depending on who is here and who is not here, I may call them out of order. I am going to call the ones I think are not here first. So, ZBA 2022-14, this is 76 Summer Street. This is a review on a special permit that was granted to operate an adult daycare service in the Neighborhood Business District. Is anyone here on this matter in person? Okay. And is anybody here remotely? If anybody is here remotely on this matter, please raise your hand. Okay. So I don't see any. This is a special permit that was granted some time ago. The review is not completed, because last I knew, they had not opened up the facility. They were waiting for state licensing approval for the adult daycare. And Ms. Mata, we haven't had any contact from the applicant, excuse me, the permit holder. And I'm just going to check on the date that this was granted. Do you think it was July? You think it was February 22? February 22. Okay. Do we have any indication from the board members what you would like to do with this review? I don't want it hanging out there forever. It's been February 22 that it was granted?
Mm-hmm.
So we are, at this point, beyond the two-year mark for this special permit to have been employed, and we have the lapse issue to address, because the lapse is set at two years in our ordinance. We can grant an extension. One hasn't been asked for, but we can grant an extension if the applicant has not put the special permit into use, and, but I would suggest that we don't do that for more than six months, because we, at this point, have a permit holder that hasn't really gotten back to us, so.
Have we had any recent communication from the applicant?
No.
Any responses to the continuances?
From last time, like, what if he said, DPH, was it still not approved?
Waiting for the state.
DPH.
Yep.
Was that two? Not the last review, but the review before?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Am I understanding, it's somebody else, somebody else is occupying the space that he was?
Someone else is occupying the space?
Yeah, no, it's there now.
Okay.
I'd make that motion to revoke the special permit.
Could, could we talk about that being modified to a finding that the special permit has lapsed due to nonuse? Because I don't know that we have any conditions broken.
The sunset clause is not broken.
So.
Condition six.
Do you have that?
I mean, if there's confirmation the space has been occupied, that would be a key indicator.
I mean, we can continue it and verify the conditions is one option forward.
So we have a sunset clause that's upon the sale or transfer of the business, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that that would apply simply for a transfer of property, because it's for the sale or transfer from the business. But I do think this has simply not been employed, not been put into place.
Okay. So there's, there's that, I mean, the only other condition is condition six about the repair are the only three items I see we could act upon.
I believe condition six was actually satisfied.
Okay.
Yeah. They did repair the concrete, which was good, which was good. I'm sorry they're not in the space. So, Mr. McLaughlin, would you consider modifying that motion to be a motion for finding that the special permit?
Yes.
Well, condition one is not being met, then. If you're not operating, you're not.
They're not operating. Yeah? And condition four?
Right.
Condition four.
I think that's the strength.
All right. So, Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to make your motion again?
I'll make the motion, excuse me, under ZBA 2022-14 for the property at 76 Summer Street, in the special permit to Daniel Estevez to revoke the special permit.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Ms. Mata, can you confirm whether or not there was any contact with the applicant or the permit holder giving him notice of this hearing? For instance, forwarding a copy of the last decision?
I did forward the last decision, and I did forward the two weeks prior notices about tonight's meeting.
Okay.
And time.
Thank you. Okay. Just to cover the issue of whether notice was received by the applicant.
And I did not receive mail back, like, you know, so it was delivered.
So no returned mail?
No.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
No correspondence from him at all? Do you?
No.
Nothing, huh?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
When is the last time we heard from him?
Ms. Mata, that was you. When was the last time the Building Department heard from the permit holder?
It was prior to the last review, which was September.
September 23. Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion on the motion, all those in favor of revoking the special permit for violation of the conditions one and four, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Special permit is revoked. Hopefully, the permit holder will find a way to get their licensing to operate and move forward. The next item on the agenda is ZBA 23-34, 21 Market Street, Louis Hernandez. This is a continuance of a special permit to reinstate a vacant or abandoned nonconforming mixed-use building, changing the use to another nonconforming, less detrimental use as a two-family dwelling in Residential C. Is anybody present in person on this application? Okay. And do I remember you got, you're the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Please have a seat at the table. Welcome to the meeting. And can you please tell me, just for the minutes, your name and city of residence?
Anthony Hernandez, Allentown, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
John Worcester, Mass.
Okay. Welcome.
Louis Hernandez.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm glad to see you all here. At the last meeting, we had spoken about an issue with the, there's a condition on the deed, and that is from a prior sale where the city retained the right to take back the property if the development wasn't completed in a certain timeline. This was the owner prior to you, so this is not through any fault of your own, and I had asked that you attempt to resolve this through seeking out the help of your city councillor. Just going to recognize that councillor Cruz is here at the other table. Can you tell me what the status is on that?
So, I'm just going to translate him.
Saying that we, as soon as we finish our meeting, we contacted Derek Cruz, our city councilman, and we were trying to figure out with the issues that we have, and if we needed more time, he will help us with that end.
Okay. Do you mind if I just talk to councillor Cruz for an update?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor, welcome to the meeting.
Sure person. Hi, thank you.
And I'm sure we all know you're a resident of the city of Pittsburgh.
Menusknock Road, yes.
Let's hope so, or else we have some more issues.
We would, it would be trouble, yes.
Can you let me know what the status is on this issue?
I'd be happy to, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. Mr. Hernandez has done everything in his power to sort of rectify the situation and to correct the challenges they're facing. I've seen it. He's been acting in good faith. We've met with Commissioner Zimmer of the Building Commission and Chantel, who shared with them some options. They've been working with their architect to see if those options are economically viable, but they've, they've been doing their due diligence to get to the bottom of this and to satisfy the zoning board's issues and concerns. At this time, I believe they may need a continuance, if the board is prepared to offer that, some more time, as, you know, it's, it's a really challenging situation for them, and they need to determine how they're going to get the four parking spots in the back, the turning radius, and then there's, there's concerns with the planning board as well. So, but like I said, they've operated in, in good faith, and they've done their due diligence. I know it's been some time, there's a little bit of a communication breakdown on my end as well that has slowed things down, I fully admit that, but I have full faith and confidence that they will continue everything in their power to meet the requirements of the zoning board.
Can you tell me briefly, is, has a petition to amend the condition on the deed been submitted to city council yet, or is that contemplated at some point in the future?
I have a, a request from their legal, their lawyer, their legal representation, asking for more time, yes.
To, to consider whether or not to move forward on that?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other information that is relevant to our decision today?
I believe their architect may be able to speak some more on that, but like I said, they're, they're doing everything in their power to satisfy the ZBA's concerns.
And speaking only for yourself, which you can only do?
Yes.
Are you personally inclined to try to reach an accommodation with this? Do you find that they have a project which, if it can move forward, would be beneficial to that neighborhood?
Of course. I mean, they have, like I said, they have operated in good faith, they have every intention of improving the community, building the two-family there and satisfying the terms. Yeah, and I believe that continuation is, is an appropriate thing to do at this time for, just to give them a little more time to, to meet those requirements.
Okay. I'm just going to check if any of my other board members have a question for you while you're here.
Please.
Mr. McLaughlin, do you have a question?
Just a comment. This probably isn't going to be something that happens in a month or two, or three is my guess, based on the complexity. So, you know, we have a time in which we have to move ahead and make a decision. Is it in the best interest of everybody to give leave to withdraw until they're ready to move forward with the project? Instead of continuance after continuance.
Let me take a poll of the board, because again, I think that this problem arose without a lot of fault. I mean, I, I think.
Oh, no doubt.
You know, for, not you personally, I, I wish that you had better counsel when you bought the property that raised the issue to you. But is there any willingness to waive the reapplication, if there's a reapplication? Reapplication fee? Yeah. Okay. All right.
It just doesn't seem like we're going to be able to get there anyways, and we're going to have to make a vote at some point before they would be ready. So then what happens at that point? Do we, do we give leave to withdraw then?
It's, it's just bringing them back before they're ready over, you know, because of our time deadlines, and I don't want to bring you back here any more than we have to. So what I'm discussing is having you ask to withdraw the application before we make a decision on it, and I've just polled the board, and they're indicating that if you did that and resubmitted a new application in the future, we'd be willing to waive the fee for that reapplication. So it removes the cost issue for you. So I, how do you, what's your response to that proposal?
Madam Chair, if I may ask, how would that affect their timeline for this project?
The ti, so if we have a new application, obviously, it has to be submitted, is it three weeks is our deadline? Or four weeks?
Four weeks, I'm saying before now.
Four weeks before the first hearing on the matter, and so we'd have the issue of you need to resubmit in time for the next hearing, but we wouldn't be faced with the timing deadlines on our decision, so we wouldn't have to keep drawing the applicant back here over and over again while we're, you know, figuring out what's going to happen. I, I would go to guess, because there's a, there's a petition to resolve this that would have to go to city council, then go, go to the City Property Committee and the Legislative Affairs Committee, I believe, and then back to the city council for approval, and to me, that is a two-to-three-month process, even if it goes, boom, you know, right through. I don't want to keep bringing you back here, and, you know, I, I don't, the reason we can't resolve this without that condition being resolved is because we don't have all of the owners consenting to the application, you know, and we don't have all the owners in control of the property. So that's why it needs to be resolved before we can move it forward here. The applicant, once the petition is moving in city council, could kind of take a look at when the resolution is scheduled for and time their application, so that the first hearing might coincide with just before the final resolution or just after the final resolution. So I don't think we would have much more delay than the time it takes resolve in city council. Does that answer your question?
It does, understood. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
My main concern has always been that Mr. Hernandez and, you know, they've invested in our community, and they've, they would like to see this through and make sure that they do a, a good job with this, and, you know, fair or not, a city does carry a reputation as sometimes being unwilling to work with, with property owners and investors, and I want to make sure that that doesn't happen in this case, and that we're giving them every opportunity to see this through and, and see their investment in our community benefit them as well. So if leave to withdraw is your appropriate decision at this point, that's, that's fine, but as always, my concern is making sure that Mr. Hernandez gets a fair shot too in his investment.
Yeah, and I will, and I know Mr. Reynolds wants to.
Well, what I would like is for the applicant to have the chance to process, there's a lot of information, and give him a chance to consider the question, before we keep throwing more information at him.
So we have two other reviews, and what I can do is suspend and call you back after the two other reviews, if you'd like.
If you want to talk about it.
You can go out and talk in the hallway for a moment, if you want.
Want to do that? You could say, well, I'd like more specifically, this is all the requirements moving forward, is right?
It's not a requirement. So what I am trying to do, as, as the councillor has alluded to, we don't want to create any unnecessary burden on you, and, you know, it's the opinion of the board that calling you back here over and over again for meetings when you can't move forward is an extra burden on you. If you withdraw the application, we don't have to keep scheduling you. You would have to reapply when you're ready, but we also had everybody indicate that this, we would waive the reapplication fee, so you wouldn't pay another reapplication fee, you just have to put the paperwork back in. Okay?
Basically, it's a rollover, and then we, we, we apply again when we're ready. And you don't have to pay, you just say, well, waive the fee.
Okay.
But if you do, if you want to talk more, tell them the topic.
The topic?
We'll, we'll wait outside, we'll come back.
All right. I'll just, the audio goes on out there, so you'll hear when I call the matter again, just keep an ear out.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So we are going to suspend the hearing on that matter, and we'll check for public comment on that matter at the recall. I'm going to move on to ZBA 23-32, 118 to 120 Intervail Road. This is the continuance of a special permit to reinstate and change the use of a vacant or abandoned nonconforming three-family structure to a less detrimental nonconforming use as a two-family dwelling after a fire in the Neighborhood Business District. And we did receive a request from the applicant. I'm going to read it into the record. This is Henry Jeneo, Intervail, Intervail Road. The architect just, the architect just called me that he wouldn't be able to make it to the meeting today. At this point, I am just going to pause the process until I find someone else to help me with the process. Please let me know if I need to do something else, or if this email is good enough to pause the process. Also, the fence is fixed. Let me know if you need pictures. Thank you. And is, is Mr. Jeneo here today?
Yes.
All right. Come on up. Thank you for coming. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
And can you just let us know your city of residence?
Let me say.
Thank you. Thank you. So you just heard me, I, I know there's been a couple of issues with how are we going to finish the construction on this project?
Yeah.
And the, and the stretch energy code issue particularly. I just discussed a interim resolution with the last applicant, where instead of keeping you coming back, coming back, coming back, you withdraw the application, and we let you reapply, waiving the fee.
Okay. That's fine.
Is that something that you would want to do?
Yeah, sure, because I need somebody else. I mean, he comes to me on twice, so supposed to come in and explain to you guys what we were trying to do, but the last minute, yeah, he comes to me, so, yeah, that's right into them.
Okay.
Yep.
Let me check with the board. Do they have any questions, or is there any indication of, of whether we'd support the fee waiver on a withdrawal?
Be in favor.
Okay. All right. Because this is a public hearing, I have to check and see if we have any public comment. Is there anyone here? Is there anyone here currently who would like to speak on for or against this petition? And then I'm going to check in our Zoom meeting, if you would like to speak on this petition, please raise your hand. I see none. Is there any board member that has a question for the applicant? Go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
Just some comments. The building is in a dangerous state. And I think we had asked for the building to be secured some months ago.
The fence fixed? Yeah, fixed.
No, access to the building, into the building, in the foundation. Am I correct?
Right, yeah.
That's number one. I'm really concerned, I mean, it's a burned out structure.
It is.
Number two, I don't want the applicant to go away and come back with a plan based on what they presented because we had made some recommendations on condominium style, side by side, so we didn't have all the outdoor stairs. And also the fact that the majority of the board wasn't in favor of putting a deck on top of the old burned out foundation. So we just want to make sure, I would, I know those are my thoughts and comments and I just don't want you to go away and come spend a lot of money on a plan and come back in and then we look at it and go, it's really not what we talked about.
Yeah.
But definitely concerned about the safety of the building. Can you kind of give us some feedback on why nothing's been done to secure it?
We're just waiting for the permit to fix it, but if you want, I can put some plywood over it, correct, in the meanwhile.
Yeah, and it's not what I want. I think you might need to go to the building department and have an inspector advise on what needs to be done to secure the building and make it safe. Okay? Those, that's all I really have.
Okay. Yeah, and I did see the safety fence up and I very much appreciate that you put that up. It wasn't, has it been secured to the building now? Because it was like loose when I was there over the weekend, yeah, okay, great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. McLaughlin. So I would just look at that issue because as the owner, you are of course going to have some liability should somebody get hurt on the property. And we don't want anybody hurt, whether you're liable for it or not.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate that. Any other comments from a board member before we move on? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I have a question. How did you secure the fence to the side of the building?
Sorry, this is off, so I just put it back up. It was off, I think it was the wind or something that blew it, blew it off.
I have a picture of it.
Yeah, yeah.
You secured it to the side of the building?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I can send you more pictures tomorrow if you want.
That's fine, I'll take a ride by. I'm all set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Talbot, any questions?
No.
Mr. Reynolds? Okay. Then I'd look for a motion on approval of the applicant's leave to withdraw and waiver of any reapplication fee within 12 months. So in other words, if you apply for, if you apply again in 24 months, you know, you're going to pay the fee again.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
I just have a comment about, you know, waiving the fees as we continue when we have case after case that runs into issues with architecture and design. The last case was very unique.
Yes.
In that it was an issue with the deed. This just seems to be a different case. And again, I just don't want us to set precedent where on leave to withdraws, where this is going to become the norm, waive fees. Just food for thought.
Okay. So, you know, I'd comment on that. My point of view on this is one of the issues, not the only issue, but one of the issues that has affected this project is the implementation of the new stretch energy code and the need to comply with it. That's then, that is a new issue that's coming before us and applicants are facing. And so an applicant who might otherwise have been prepared, at least with a plan that we could look at as relatively final comment on, make some changes, I think the whole project is called into question because of the stretch energy code requirements and the cost and then the redesign that needs to happen. I would love for everyone to be prepared for that, but I'm willing to give like a little bit of leeway in this time period.
That's a great point that I think allows us to move ahead in this instance. I know he was, purchased the property prior to the new wonderful code. Saw the transition through, so again, if we have valid reasons, I think it's great, I just don't want it to.
Proliferate and just be everybody.
So I will second Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. All right, any other discussion on the motion?
I'm all set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay. So your application has been withdrawn and again, should you reapply within 12 months, the fee will be waived.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with everything.
Have a good evening.
Yep, and anything you can do to secure that building, we very much appreciate. Calling ZBA 23-35, 513 Williams Road. This is continuance of a request for a special permit to build a 16 by 20 shed on the right side of the house encroaching on the side setback, leaving approximately 10 feet from the property line in the residential, rural residential district. So we have a request from the applicant for a continuance until the meeting in May, on May 14th, and a signed agreement offered in support of that request. It's my understanding from Ms. Mata that the building commissioner has been down to the property, has had some discussions with the applicant and that he is looking into a different resolution, but is not ready to withdraw the application at this time. If you remember, this was an application that at my look at it required a variance rather than a special permit. Do we have any comment on the request for continuance from board members? Mr. Reynolds?
Supportive?
Mr. Talbot?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. McLaughlin, I save you for last.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it's always appreciated. As long as we are within that prescribed time that we have to make type of decision.
We have an agreement extending the deadline, so we're fine with it.
As long as that clears the deck for everything then. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Continue till May?
Thank you, May 14th.
May 14th. And that is for ZBA 2023-35.
Can I ask you to suspend the motion for a moment while I check for public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anybody here who would like to make a comment on for or against this matter? Is there anybody present online who would like to make a comment on for or against this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that matter is continued to May 14th, 2024, and I am going to accept the extension agreement and Ms. Mata will duly file it with the city clerk's office. All right, it is now past 6:30, so we may call the first new matter on our agenda. Calling ZBA 23-39, 447 Water Street. This is a request for a special permit under the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to reestablish a business as a small motor vehicle sale and repair shop pursuant to section 181.94, located in the neighborhood business district. All right, Mr. Mateo, welcome to the meeting.
Hi, good evening.
For our minutes, can you let us know your city of residence?
Sure, 35 Avon Street, Wakefield, Mass.
All right, thank you very much. So just to review, this is a property that had a special permit for, or this exact or very similar use before. That tenant permit holder vacated the property at this point in time?
Yes, they were, they were evicted.
Seems like it's been vacant since January. And you are now going to apply for the special permit to be reissued.
Correct, yeah, we would like to reestablish Rayco Motors there. And it was unfortunate it didn't work out with the last tenant, so.
I was sorry not to see them work out as well. And hopefully they'll, they'll be more successful in their next endeavor. Because we have to treat this as a new application, can you please summarize what you're proposing at this location for us?
Sure. As prior ZBA special permit that we held there on the Rayco Motors, we're looking to reestablish it auto repair and small car dealership, that's it.
Okay, so both, both repair and dealership?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're going to be running it under Rayco Motors?
That is correct.
And that is a corporation and you're, let's say, in control of the corporation?
That's correct, we own the building and we also own Rayco Motors.
Can you let me know how many employees you expect to have in the business?
Not more than two.
And what do you expect the hours of operation to be?
Same as before, I can pull up the prior special permit that we had if you like.
What we might do is just review the conditions on that.
Yeah.
That might be helpful. Okay, oh, that one's back from 2019. That was when the esteemed Ms. McNamara was chairing our ZBA.
Right.
All right.
Do you have the conditions there in front of you?
I have it, but it will take a mere moment to bring up. So we had that matter at the December meeting, but that was the revocation of the special permit. Do you happen to recall the last meeting before that, was it November?
I don't recall, I think it was maybe a few months before that.
All right, September, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, I have it here. All right, so let's review the conditions. We had a condition that it was to be operated according to the submitted plan dating June 9th, 2018, and that's the plan that you've resubmitted, correct?
Correct.
Which plan is that clarification, because I have two.
So I have a plan dated June 9th, 2018, prepared for Clearwater Real Estate Investment Group, and that was by Gaffney.
That's correct, yeah, that's the plan.
Is it 7406A or B?
I don't have it in front of me, I can take a look if you like.
Because there are two that have the same date and were.
We made a slight modification based on the request for the snow removal component and we were managing a handicap parking space as well, so that, that might be why there's two. I'd have to see which one you're looking at to identify the difference.
When you applied this time, which one did you submit?
The one that shows the eight parking spots for cars for sale. And it's the same one I also let the last tenant use for their approval.
Would you mind approaching just to, so this is the one that I have with my packet and there are nine spaces on it?
There is certainly a different version, actually, yeah, there is a different version. I think there's one that has more spots.
More spots there?
We're still only looking to have eight cars, so we don't want a lot.
So this is the B version.
B.
The B version is with our packets.
Okay.
And, ah, so the B version was approved previously.
Right.
And then the A version was the not approved version that had a lot more.
Correct, this had, yeah, this is the number of, yeah, so either way, the white cross.
Okay, so either plan is acceptable to you, okay. Yes, yes, that's the one that was approved. All right, I'm going to move on then unless you have any more questions on the plan for now, okay. So no plastic or vinyl banners, professional signage only, I think that had been an issue with the tenant for a little bit.
Yeah, we'll be taking care of any of that problem.
Okay. And having been the permit holder before, I'm sure you know what we mean by professional signage.
Absolutely.
Installed on the building. No exterior storage of junk and no inoperable or dismantled vehicles outside of the property, no problem with complying with that provision?
That's not an issue.
No parking on the sidewalk or street. And I think, you know how it is, it's a small lot and we had a lot of, it's such a push and pull, like it's good to have so much business there, but then there's just not much space for.
I agree, there's got to be a right balance. And so the spot itself is very small and I'm not really looking to sell a lot of cars, so that's it.
All right. The hours of operation were Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 7:30, and Saturday, 9 to 3, Sunday closed.
That sounds right.
Okay. We had the sunset clause, which, you know, I think we'd consider again and therefore I want to make sure I understand who's the operator.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that a little bit if we could, the sunset clause.
Okay.
If I may?
Yeah.
Okay. The place is an automotive repair shop, I really don't have any intentions of knocking it down and building a two-family or a three-family, right? And prior ownership, when I transferred the permit to the tenant, it really never changed because I continued to be the owner of the property, they just leased it from me. And I'm hoping we can find a way to kind of evolve around this sunset clause because it seems to really is detrimental to the business. In fact, you know, I've, I've kept it closed for the last three months in respect of this board, even though there's people around me operating without no permits. And I'd just like to try to play the level, the field should be level for all of us, right? So I just would really like to find a way to work around that. If I someday decide to move from there and rent it to somebody else who might be a better tenant, they're going to probably do automotive and car dealership, right? So how can we manage that?
Okay, it's a fair comment. And as you know, this board unfortunately does not have responsibility for enforcement because I know that there are a number of members of this board who would love to have responsibility for enforcement so that we could have more active enforcement for people who are operating outside of permits, so. I'm going to have the board discuss that, but I'm going to move forward through the rest of the conditions.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Not to operate as a public nuisance, fairly simple. And then we had a condition to remove some signposts, concrete and wires that were present on the property, I think it was a broken signpost and there was still a stub there.
Mm-hmm.
That's still there?
If you're referring to the posts on the left-hand side of the building, that's for an actual like signpost, I can pull it up really quick just to make sure I'm on the same page as you.
Is there intention to use it?
Possibly. Give me one second here. I mean, that, I cut that down, that's no longer there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's not there anymore.
Right. Mr. Gallagher, I know that you've been, you've had that on your radar, did you, were you able to visit the property and?
I did, and it is still there.
Okay. Are, are we talking about a different location?
Are we talking?
No.
What's on the right side?
What are we talking about? Yeah, I can, I can point it out to you.
Right side.
It's on the right side, not on the left.
This post?
Yep.
That's what holds the chain up so people don't drive it there.
Wait a minute, no, no, no. Below where this car is parked, there's.
Foundation of the sign that's no longer there.
It's an old, it's an old metal bracket in the ground with wires coming up, that's kind of broken.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought you meant the post that holds the chain, because a lot of cars like to drive and make a U-turn.
Yeah, it, it's in that vicinity, though.
Okay, yeah, I'll take care of that, that's not an issue.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna take a moment to, this is, this is a technological advancement I would love to be able to do all the time, we just can't manage it sometimes. But what I'm doing right now, it's, it's askew, but I'm gonna change, I'm gonna put on view the plan that we're talking about, so it's visible. Okay, it is sideways, but it's there. Okay, so that was all of the.
All right, I wasn't sure if you, no, you can hit that little button on the right over there, that shows like a counterclockwise, right there, to the right?
Yeah.
Right there.
Well, maybe we'll do this and just concentrate on the top of the plan.
Yep.
Please scroll down, check.
Yeah, that's better.
I believe that's the A plan.
That is the A plan. Mm-hmm. All right, well, I'm gonna stop this, because that's the wrong plan.
No problem.
Try it again another time.
Good effort.
Okay. Before I move forward to public comment, do you have, and we're gonna have another session to have discussion with the board, do you have anything else you wanted to add about the application?
Uh, no, just really appreciate your consideration and, you know, I've tried to respect the board and everything that we do, I've kept it closed since December 12th, it's been three months, obviously it's not a very nice financial position to be in, but we're here and we're looking to move forward, so thanks.
Thank you. All right, is there any person here present who would like to make comment on for or against this application? Is there any person present virtually who would like to make comment on for or against this application, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Talbot, any questions or comments for the applicant?
Is the parking orientation the same as it was?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Gallagher, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no, no questions.
Okay. And then Mr. McLaughlin, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mateo, is the parking lot striped according to the plan?
I repaved the parking lot after we had our first approval, but we have, I haven't striped it. I mean, we, there's only X number of vehicles you can actually fit, I, I can't put more than, even if I wanted to.
Yeah, that's correct, it's just the history of that property has been typically when you go by it, there are vehicles everywhere.
That's hence why I'm taking it back and operating it myself, sir.
Yeah, so, and, and I think it's a visual thing, like, you know, if I pull up, are you gonna do repairs or just?
We're doing repairs and auto sales.
Okay, so I think with the combined use, it's gonna be very difficult to adhere to this plan.
It wasn't difficult for us for three years, sir, we didn't, really had an issue with it.
So my question to you is, can you stripe it according to plan, and if you indeed have a handicap spot that it's marked properly, and?
I think that's all possible, yes.
Okay, okay. Because it was, as you're aware.
I am very aware, trust me.
Your prior tenant, it was, it was.
I know.
Tough for everybody.
And, and.
Mostly yourself.
And, and really, look, like I said, I, I would really love to have folks that are on the ZBA be able to be enforcement officers, because if you look not very far from where I am, you will see chaos, and I wish that the same laws, rules and regulations would apply to everyone.
And they should, Mr. Mateo, and we encourage you as a property owner.
I'm not, I'm not in for that.
Visit the building department if you find.
I mean.
That things need to be addressed.
Agree. Just leave it at that, thank you, sir.
Any, tell me about future plans to improve the place.
Sir, I'm happy to pull up some pictures of the before and after, we spent about $150,000 fixing the place, new roof, new mechanicals, new electrical, new paving, it was a dump when I bought it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Let's talk about the sunset clause issue.
Yes.
So the last, did you wanna? Okay, thanks. I'm gonna bring it up. So the sunset clause was attached, instead of being attached to the ownership of the real estate, it was attached to the ownership of the business.
Correct.
And if we detach it from the business, I, I know during the last hearing we had an issue about, you know, the applicant apparently did not obtain your signature on the application, which was not apparent to me when I first reviewed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Certainly having the applicant owner be the attached and responsible party for the sunset clause, I, I can see that that would work, but as the owner, you would then be responsible for any, let's say that you did decide to have a tenant operate the business again?
Correct.
You would be responsible for their violations of the special permit conditions. Is that something that you'd be willing to tolerate?
I would be willing to tolerate that, because if they violate the special permit conditions, then they are in effect depreciating an asset that I own on Water Street, and I really needed to have a special permit, otherwise I'd have to knock it down and build something else and still come here for another special permit, so I've, I'm trying to keep the place.
Right. I mean, hopefully.
Yeah.
And I just, I'm pulling up your deed, so currently the owner is Clearwater Real Estate Investment Group, LLC?
Yes, since 2017.
Okay. And so what I'd, because I don't really want to restrict transfer of the property too much.
I got it, okay.
And I, I assume you're the member manager of that LLC?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I think I'd contemplate having a sunset clause with that condition, it would have to be attached to the current owner, the current owner would have to be the permit holder.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I, I think what I would allow a transfer to you individually as well, I assume there's no other members?
No.
Not to divulge all of your business.
Yeah, yeah, no, there is none.
You know, and that way we could allow that kind of minimal transfer without violating the sunset clause. So I think for me that as long as you understand that level of responsibility.
I understand.
I think it would be okay. Any other comment on that? No, we're still holding, whether or not it's the owner or the tenant business operator, if they violate the conditions, they would be subject to revocation of the special permit.
Correct.
So, okay.
And your recommendation is to keep it on the tenant?
Um, no, we're talking about keep it on, keeping it on the property owner.
Which puts the onus on the property owner, if the tenant isn't adhering to the conditions.
Correct. So the tenants, the owner would be responsible for the tenant's behavior and compliance with the conditions?
Which I'm okay with, any tenant I have, if they're not really up to it, they should go, so I'm okay with, I mean, look at what I went through last time, right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, from my point of view, and, and I want to attach both names, the other reason is that Clearwater Investment wasn't the applicant listed on the published notice, it was Rayco Motors.
Mm-hmm.
But you were.
Yes.
Yeah, so. To me, there is a greater responsibility when we have the property owner liable for the actions of the tenant, because that, you know, we, we have them responsible for the special permit, should there be a serious violation and there be a need to issue fines, we would have no issue with the fact that it's going to the owner, and no claim of the owner that they weren't responsible for the violations, so. I think we still get the compliance factor that we need in there with that special permit provision like that.
If, if we do change it, I would like to put a sunset clause on this particular owner, I know this particular owner will do a good job, but we don't know about any future owners.
Right. So we'd be looking at ensuring that the sunset clause applied if there was a transfer from the LLC to anyone but you individually.
Mm-hmm.
And then if there was any substantial change in the ownership of the LLC. So that would, to me, would be a change of ownership interest of more than 20%.
Okay, so, just one question for clarification, what happens if in the future I get a tenant, they turn out to be okay, they operate the business, and then they want to buy the business? That doesn't, from what I heard, that doesn't cancel that special permit?
By the business or by the?
The building, the property, because they would be the building owner, hence still also the operator, and they could still be held liable.
So the sunset clause would apply to a change of ownership of the property beyond yourself?
Yep.
Or the LLC or a substantial change in the ownership of the LLC? So we're, we're still looking to hold, to know the person responsible for this.
I get, I get it.
If I may, Madam Chair? So in essence, in the scenario that you described?
Yes.
That would be a variance, and we're here for a special permit, which is just gonna be just a little bit of a different view.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But just in the world of you wanting to like explore options and?
Yeah.
How do you overcome obstacles, like that would be the avenue to?
Okay, thank you.
Accomplish that.
Thanks.
All right.
That's it.
Anything else to add before I close the public?
No, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so without objection, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and do we have any discussion on conditions or allowance on this application? I'm gonna go around, Mr. Reynolds.
Supportive of the applicant, and whatever the right language is, I'm probably not the one to provide it, but supportive of what we're going.
Okay. Mr. Talbot?
I'm in support of this.
Okay, thank you.
Without the sunset clause?
Without the sunset clause.
With the, with the wording you described.
With the modified.
Without the current sunset clause.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm in support as well.
Okay. And Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, Madam Chair, just with the conditions that I think the board members had addressed, you know, some issue with the, whatever that concrete?
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
And the wires needs to be removed and capped, and just that the, you know, as we discussed, the plan, according to the, we're accepting this according to the plan that's submitted, the parking plan, and that the, you know, at some point within X amount of prescribed time that the board wants, that the parking lot be cleaned and then professionally striped, and, you know, even if, to try to keep, preserve some safety on the lot. And again, pardon me, Mr. Mateo, just looking at the last year or two that the city and yourself went through, where it was almost unsafe there, you know, so if there are areas that are not parking, not allowed for parking, are, are open for the garage bays, that maybe no parking can be put in there, you know?
Yeah, we'll organize it.
That's it, you know, and I think I'm optimistic he's ready to make a turn on this property for the better.
Thank you.
Well, he's had a lot of experience with it to date, so.
Sure have. It's been nice to fix it and turn it around, because really, water was leaking through the roof and it was bad.
Yeah, better now.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So I do want, want to designate that we're using version B of this plan, because that, that's the one that was approved prior with the snow storage marked on there. And that provides for nine spaces. And the plan designates that one and two are for employee parking, which would fit in with the number of employees that you have. So I'm gonna recite, and, and for Mercedes Ease, I'm going to refer to the decision, the conditions from the last permit. Condition one, to be operated according to the submitted plan dated June 9th, 2018, plan number 7406-B. No plastic, condition number two, no plastic or vinyl banners, professional signage only. Condition number three, no exterior storage of junk and no inoperable or dismantled vehicles outside of the property. Condition four, no parking on the sidewalk or street. Condition five, hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 7:30, Saturday, 9 to 3, and Sunday closed. Condition number six, not to operate as a public nuisance. Condition number seven, property owner to remove signposts, concrete and wires within, so we had within 60 days.
That's fine, on the right-hand side of?
On the right-hand side of the building. And then I'm gonna work the language here for a minute on the sunset clause, which will be condition eight. So this special permit shall terminate or expire upon the sale or transfer of the subject property for 47 Water Street from Clearwater Investments.
Clearwater Real Estate Investment Group.
Thank you, Clearwater Real Estate Investments LLC, or Harold Mateo, or a transfer of ownership interests in Clearwater Real Estate Investments LLC of greater than 20%. As of the present date, Mr. Mateo is the sole owner of the LLC.
That's correct.
All right, and? I, I don't want to keep coming back for reviews, I'm trying to cut back.
I can email you pictures when it's all done, and I have no issues with that.
Okay. So the, if we had a six-month review? That would put us out to September?
Sure.
Every, do you think you'll have the striping done in the parking lot?
Yeah, as soon as paving season starts, we'll be good to go.
All right, and I did include the striping in the plan.
That would be numbered nine.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. So review date of September, September something, 2024.
That's fine.
September 9. Thank you, you're so good. September 10. September 10, 2024. Any other comment on the conditions?
Just one insertion. With regards to junk and inoperable vehicles, no outside storage of auto parts. We seem to have a lot of auto part businesses within the city that we end up with piles of auto parts that are visible. You know, it's normal practice that you're repairing parts, but they go in the dumpster, not in a pile.
Yeah.
Just a little protection from that.
That's no problem. We have our own dumpsters. We'll throw everything out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Then we would modify condition number three to say no exterior storage of junk, comma, motor vehicle parts.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
And then go on from there. Okay. I'm looking for a motion on the allowance of the special permit.
I'll make the motion on ZBA 2023-39 for Rayco Motors and Harold Mateo for the property at 447 Auto Street for the special permit. As requested with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Special permit is granted.
Thank you, appreciate it. Once the decisions are signed, then I can pick it up to record it.
Yes, so remember, the special permit needs to be recorded before the certificate can issue. And that there's a 20-day appeal period that you have to wait.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to recognize that ZBA 2334 is back in the ring.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder, appreciate it. Recalling, ZBA 23-34, 21 Market Street, Luis Hernandez. Sorry about the delay. I get going on what we're doing and then, there we are. So you've had an opportunity to discuss. And I'm going to ask what your, what your decision is on whether to withdraw the application.
Correct, we will be moving forward withdrawing and reapplying.
Okay, all right. Any other comments you want to make before we go to that?
He wants to say thank you for giving us the opportunity and that he really wants to make it work and have this property work for the community and have growing families inside this property.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hernandez, I just, I want to say to you, I know that there was a very unkind comment that was made at the last hearing. And I just want to make very clear that the board does not endorse the comment that was made. All right, I'm going to go to public comment and Counselor, you are first.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I also just want to recognize you and the body for your willingness to work with Mr. Hernandez with this property and give them the opportunity to see it through. Thank you very much, and thank you for taking my comments as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Is there any other person here who would like to make a comment on for or against this application? All right. Welcome, sir.
Paul Bushman, City Council of Pittsburgh. I live in Pittsburgh. I wasn't here until last minute, so I apologize about this 21, but my fellow council knows how I feel about this piece of property. I really believe that we're making a big mistake to try to redevelop 21 Market Street. I think the city would be better served if the building was demolished and split it up between the neighbors. It's congested and I think he's going to have a heck of a time with the parking situation in the back of the building. I've been down there when they put the house up for sale, me and some other people. And it was a shame that we even put it up there for sale and the guy bought it. There were stipulations on the deed when it was supposed to be done, and they did not get done. It's not his fault. I understand that. But in all fairness, we had a similar thing happened in the city council and I brought up issues. And what I was told when I was sitting in those chairs, buyer beware. You know, and he has an opportunity to go back after the previous owner and go back and get his money. And the city has the opportunity to buy it for $3, $5, or $100, or where they get paid and rectify the area. I think, again, I repeat, I really believe that the area, and that area on Market Street, would be better served if the building was stored down and there'd be more open space in that areas. It's way, way too congested. I think you all have been down there too, I'm sorry. So that's my opinion on it. And when he brings it up to the council, I told him already that I was going to fight against it because that's how I feel about that area. I thank you very much for your time and energy.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Appreciate the comment and for your coming to the meeting. Is there any other person here who would like to make comment on for or against? Welcome. Please give your name and then your city of residence.
Sure.
My name is David Poles. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. And I own 25 Market Street right next door. So I have some concerns. I think I echo earlier concerns made about it. I'm just glad it's being looked at, the whole situation, and I trust the owners will do what they need to do to be responsible and take all the steps. I don't know how it'll turn out, but I just wanted to show up and say that I was concerned about the lack of parking and how it'll affect the nearby areas, my residents there. So, thank you.
And you're a resident of the area?
I live in another part of Pittsburgh. But I own the multi-unit at 25 Market Street, so I have three sets of residents at that multi-unit. So there's not much parking. There's a narrow driveway between our two properties. And so I'm just concerned about the matter, and I'm glad it's being looked at. Hope things are decided in a wise way, so. So, all right.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there any other person here who would like to make comment on for or against this issue? Is there any person online who would like to make comment on for or against this application? Please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, there's another gentleman in the audience that had raised his hand.
Sorry, I couldn't see you, sir. I need you to come up to the podium in order to speak. I sympathize with being short.
Good evening, my name's Chris Ametta. I own the property next door, 19 Market Street. As the council had stated, this is a density issue. It's very tight in the area. Unfortunately, Councilor Cruz did not, to my knowledge, reach out to the other abutters on the property. I wish he was as concerned as he was for us, as he was for the gentleman sitting to my right. There's an issue with setbacks, in my opinion. There's an issue with the fact that the conditions of the covenants of this deed were not met when the first sale. The conditions on the deed on the second sale were not met. So my question to the town is at what point is this going to be managed? And that's why I was saying I'm here today. Also with snow, that's a huge issue. Setbacks with Mr. Poles' property for parking. That driveway is right up against his bedroom windows for his property, for his tenants. Storm was a big issue for that property. Parking's a big issue for that area. So at the end of the day, I think you know, it's the town, the board, the abutters' responsibility to look at this project as a whole and see what's going to be best for the neighborhood, not just the two families that could possibly live in this property. What about the other families that live in the abutting buildings that are around? That's all I have.
Thank you very much for the comment. Appreciate your participation. Anybody?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, so with that being said, we had proposed that the, we have an approval of the withdrawal of the application. And that we have a waiver of a reapplication fee. Again, I think we should limit that to a reapplication within 12 months for the particular reasons of the deed restriction that everybody's dealing with in this meeting. Go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
When you're finished, Madam Chair.
Okay. So unless there is further discussion, I'd be looking for a motion on the request to withdraw and waive the reapplication fee.
So moved?
Any second?
No, I have just some comment.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and then discussion on the motion.
Okay. You know, Councilor Boeschmann brought up some good points. The city over the years hasn't done a great job with a lot of the abandonment and the property aspect. We seem to acquire these properties through tax title or through, you know, lack of paying taxes that are, you know, old obsolete buildings and, you know, we're struck with trying to find a balance, right? You have a property where the building itself almost encompasses all of the real estate and there is no off-street parking. But then we want to try to, you know, rehabilitate the building. I always look at a lot of these scenarios and, as was 100 years ago, most of these buildings may have been single-family homes, and then over the years they get converted to two and three families. The attic gets renovated, the basement. You know, and I think we need to look at situations, and I'm, you know, making this comment to the applicant, that if it's, if it's real dense in the neighborhood and there's not a lot of real estate, we're not meeting the setback requirements, sometimes we have to look at, is single-family housing better? You know? And reducing the density, but yet still striking that balance of redeveloping the property itself. Because in today's world, most families have two and three cars. The sidewalks in that neighborhood are not in good shape. The roads are narrow. They don't meet today's standards. We have to really start looking at what's the long-term benefit to the neighborhood as a whole. So just wanted to throw some of that out there. When you start thinking about this project, kind of where, you know, my thoughts are with it.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. And remembering that we still have a motion on the table, I'm just going to remind the applicant that if the applicant wants to review, recordings of the meeting are publicly available online so that you can go back and listen later.
Thank you so much.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right, so the application is withdrawn, and again, if you reapply within 12 months, the application fee will be waived. Good luck with the project.
Thank you so much, Madam. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, our next matter is ZBA 23-40, 180 Main Street, Travis Bovee. This is a request for a special permit under the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to occupy and operate an exhaust and auto repair shop pursuant to Section 181.94 located in the downtown business district. And I take it that you are Mr. Bovee?
Yes, I am.
All right, welcome to the meeting. Can you just, for a minute, let us know your city of residence?
Yeah, Londonburg, yes.
Thank you for traveling all the way from the fine city town of Londonburg. All right. So this is an application for, and it's motor vehicle repair, right?
Yes.
Not sales?
I mean, at my last location, which was on John Fitch, 564, which is now Mineki. They did allow, if I sold a personal car out front, it wasn't a problem, but I do not plan on having a full-on dealership. But sometimes I do buy a car, I'll drive it for a while, and then I'll sell it, but it isn't my name. That's something that's not a problem, you know, having a for-sale sign, it's something I personally own. But I'm not looking by any means to create a dealership environment. Which, same thing on John Fitch, if anybody here remembers that. Occasionally, I would sell a personal car out front. And I know that was brought up, I had opened that place before.
So basically a sales that wouldn't implicate the requirement of a dealer's license, right?
Yeah, I'm not looking to do that, no.
Any auto bodywork?
I don't plan on doing anything other than if it's, you know, rust repair, like changing a rotted fender or, you know, a light front collision, but I won't be painting anything in the building, no.
Right, so we don't have the need for the exhaust system.
Yeah, if it's a car that was in a collision, I would do the work there, but I would sub out the paint work to a local body shop. I've always done that in the past. I did do insurance claims in my previous location, but I did not paint anything on the property. There was nothing of that nature being done there. It was more general repair, so I'm bolting and bolting and, you know, general service.
How many employees do you plan to have on site?
So it's hard to gauge exactly until I open the location, but I would, between five and 10, to be honest. There's eight realistic bays, so there'll probably be somewhere between eight and 10 lifts, to be honest. There's a bay door on the gas station side that will easily fit three to four lifts when you come through that door. And then there's the five bays across the front. So depending on how it's set up, I would like to have a guy that's working each lift. So I would say between five and 10 is kind of the plan.
And what are your planned hours of operation?
So I would like to do, if possible, Monday through Sunday, if we could do seven to eight.
So seven days a week?
Yeah. I'm not saying that I'm going to open at that, but if I wanted to, depending on how businesses, I have that availability.
Are you doing any exterior modifications to the building?
I am going to get with a contract and have them pull proper permits with the town, so we can do that. I want to put a fence up by the train tracks so it will block people from going through. I do want to put a gate on that fence as well. So that way they can't really access the side door. Just because it's very dark in that area. I've noticed, I visited the property today, there's been graffiti that's been painted on the side since my last visit. So I want to alleviate any of that, so I do want to put up a fence. Again, the fence company would pull the permits and put privacy slats through so you don't see the train tracks, just so it gives it a cleaner curb appeal.
So a chain link with privacy slat?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if possible, depending on what the regulations would be, I'd like the fence to kind of go off the back wall of the property this way, and then if it can, come up to kind of meet the side of the parking garage so they can't walk through. And then I wanted to put from the other corner of the building across with like a 10-foot gate.
But not across the front of the property?
No, 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 just from the corner, the back corner of the building, and then the front corner where the bay doors are, and then up this way along the parking garage. So it might go past the building as far as where it goes up along the parking garage, just so they can't walk through still. The whole thing is to stop people from cutting through the train tracks and cutting through the property.
Okay. And you don't need any kind of dimensional relief here, setbacks are all fine. How many parking spaces are you going to have?
So I submitted the parking plan that was previous to my watch you set. I would like to have somebody come in and do a parking plan, or if I was able to keep the original parking plan that Montori had. Seemed like it worked for a long time. I'd like to do that if possible, just to repaint the lines that are existing to what was original. I might even take some of them out just for better maneuverability on the property, but if I could keep the parking plan that was original to the structure, that would be great.
Okay. So this up on the screen here is the parking plan that you submitted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was the most recent one.
All right, and that has 22 spaces shown?
Yeah.
With two of them being accessible?
Yeah.
Okay, so 22 total, not 24?
Yeah, no, I get that. And that's the plan that my watch you said had submitted. The way that they had kind of submitted that plan, I think as far as if a car is being towed in, they kind of have it mapped out where it's almost islands. The way you pull into that property with the island that's on Boulder Drive and from Main Street to access it, it's just going to make it a lot harder if a tow truck's coming in to cut those corners.
So this was before the modifications to Main Street occurred?
Yeah.
It was 2017?
Yeah, yeah, the old, the way the old parking was when it was Montori's in VN or Tire.
So the entrance is obvious if somebody is coming from Boulder Drive, from the former, and they're going to take a right in. If somebody is coming from the train station on Main Street, is there an entrance there on Main Street?
So there's an entrance, so the both entrances, one's on Boulder Drive technically where the gas station is and then the other one is on Main Street, pretty much right at the corner of the parking garage. So that one you can only access if you were on that side of the island. You can't cut across, the island goes all the way across. So it'd basically be a right-hand turn in and a right-hand turn out. The one that's in between the gas station and the property, if you're coming up Main Street and you take that left to go down the backside of Boulder Drive, you can take that left into it or you can take the immediate right after you pass the gas station.
Are you going to paint the building at all?
I'm not going to paint it, no, the building was recently painted. Obviously going to paint inside.
Do you have any other licenses you need to obtain in order to operate there?
No, no, I have everything.
Where's the location of the dumpster for you?
So right now, my plan is just to have a dumpster on wheels and I would roll it out. You know, it would be from windways and then they would just come and empty it, whatever day that is, we would roll it out when they come. But once the fence is completed, I may put it in that 10-foot section where the gate would be, which I would unlock it when they come to do it. But I wouldn't have any dumpster where it's visible outside.
And what's your projected time to open after you get the permit?
I mean, I'd like to be open realistically for April 1st.
If the board votes to approve the special permit today, after it's written and filed with the city clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period that has to expire after that. Just so you know.
So within the 20 days, if it was approved here today, you have to wait another 20 days after you get it before you can open, so May is what you're saying?
Yes, so after this meeting, if there's a vote to approve, there has to be a written decision drafted,
Yep.
finalized and filed with the city clerk. And then 20 days from the day it's filed with the city clerk, if there's no appeal, that's what it is, it's an opportunity for anybody to appeal
Yeah.
the decision. Then the final decision can be issued.
Okay. So just to obviously be on the same page, so we'd realistically be looking like May 20th before it could really open?
Well, I, I think you'd be looking, you know, and certainly, we don't like to delay anybody, but we're having a 14-matter decision hearing today.
Yeah, no, I
It's a lot.
It's just there's a lot of permits that need to be pulled to do work inside as well.
Yeah.
So now it makes me feel like I wouldn't be able to do anything till July or even further out as far as opening and the kind of, the kind of money that I have to invest to make this happen, it's not 10 grand, it's not 20 grand, it's hundreds. So it definitely makes me kind of think about things, honestly, because I've been dealing with this since December. So how long can I keep going down that road and not be able to do anything with the property? That's a little
You know, I, I certainly hear that concern and to the extent that I can do something about it.
No, I understand, I just, when I did John Fitch, it took me a year before I could even open. You know, so it's just, I didn't want to go down that road again.
Is, is your relationship to the property, are you leasing it right now or are you on the lease already?
So I'm in the process of trying to buy it, but I signed a lease until we get everything done, but I'm paying $10,000 a month. So Yeah, I don't know.
I hear, I hear the pain.
Yeah.
I hear the pain. All right, at this point, I'm going to move for public comment and then we'll go to board comment. And we'll allow you another opportunity to answer questions and so forth. Sir, I see your hand is raised. Welcome to the meeting, please tell us your name and city of residence and then you're welcome to comment.
Official name, Harold R. Smith Jr., but I go by Hal. I am a Pittsburgh resident and have been for many years. I'm also representing Viola Pittsburgh Tireman Service, which is up the road on Boulder Drive, and also Rolston Congregational Church, which is across the street. And we are all in favor of him going in, so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
It's nice to see viable businesses in Pittsburgh. And hopefully, they keep going. And if you need tires, we're just up the road.
Hardly agree with you, sir. Is there any other person who would like to make comment on for or against this petition? Is there any person present online who would like to make comment on for or against this petition? Ms. Motta, can you check? Okay, great. All right, then I'm going to move to board member questions. Mr. Talbot, I'm going to go to you first.
No, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, great.
No questions.
Mr. Gallagher?
I'm in favor also, Madam Chair, but I do have a few questions. Just for clarification purposes. You had stated that you, there are five booths in the front of the building that currently have lifts, correct?
Yeah, there's five, there's no lifts in there.
There's no lifts?
There's five bay doors in the front.
Okay.
And then on the side by the gas station, there used to be two existing bay doors.
Right, I remember.
I was going to have somebody come and engineer all the permits to put the other door back in and then move some walls inside.
Okay.
So it's more garage space on the back corner. So once you come in, the lifts would be at an angle. So technically, it was between seven and 10 lifts is what I wanted to install in there.
Okay, okay. I think previously there were lifts in the five spaces.
There was, yeah, there was in the back too, but somebody had taken them out previously.
Unfortunately.
I don't know if it was Malwachusett.
Yeah. It looks like the building could certainly support current code to put new lifts in.
Yeah.
You know, the building is, is in very good condition still.
No, the building's really solid, it's tough.
I wish you luck on it, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLaughlin, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the pleasure of working with the applicant as he came before us at his previous property on John Fitch Highway. And he, and he went through some undue delays, got through them and all that. But the one thing I have to say is that if anybody made notice of the business that he had on John Fitch and how beautiful the property was with the colors, with the facade and with the investment that he made, which unfortunately got changed quite a bit under the new ownership, it was just, it really was above and beyond what I even expected. So I most certainly am in favor of this application. If there are ways that we can help because of the investment that he has to make and due to the extreme costs, the sooner he's in operation, the better. If there's any way this board can be a non-contributor to the delays, that would be great. You know, we have our process after, like you said, we, there's a lot of decisions to be written. Maybe we can give some priority to this decision and try to help this application go to the next step and see that empty building finally be viable again. You know, it's a key component to that, to that corner along with the other businesses. As always, you know, I think we have a standard kind of list of conditions with regards to junk vehicles and maybe we do a review in six months to talk a bit, maybe a little more in depth about parking, but let's get this business up and running with our standard lists. Seven days a week. We haven't had that request, but if you look at a, if you look at Firestone, they're open seven days a week. You know, this type of business warrants it. And again, it's subject to review. And also, it's, it's in a true business environment where it doesn't abut any residential property. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, my comment is that I'm, I'm also in favor of granting this special permit. I agree that you kept the other property very well. And I have the expectation you will do the same here. And like Mr. McLaughlin, I, I certainly don't want to hold up, especially given the carrying costs, the, the decision any more than is absolutely required to do. We didn't ask about signage, what is your signage plan?
So again, I would come back to the town to pull a permit. I'd like to maybe build some kind of sign box closer to the sidewalk if it takes up one parking spot or two parking spots. It doesn't necessarily have to be wired with lights, if I put LED light or something, you know, like a solar light, at, at least at night for a couple hours, it'll shed some light so you see it. And I was thinking maybe some kind of planter box, what a nice, you know, sign post coming out of it, what a decent sign by the road. I haven't got that far exactly how or what I want to do. But on the building, I do want to put some lighted sign boxes. At my old property, which I know Firestone in Mineki does it, I would like to have some, some banners over the bay doors, if that's doable, I know I did it before. If they start to get worn or dilapidated, I'll change them out. I obviously want the business to represent me as an individual and the community, so I'll do whatever it takes to keep it in good standing and clean condition. You know, you're only going to drive business by the way you represent and how you do things, so.
So our, our standard provision is professional signage only?
Yep.
And I think banners are generally disfavored as temporary, temporary signage.
Yeah.
Obviously, you're going to have to comply with the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
And without, without a plan of what you were going to do, we wouldn't grant any relief from that here. And, and you're not ready with a plan to give it, to give it to us at this point?
Yeah. Well, as far as like bay banners, I mean, is that something that would be permitted? Seeing how Firestone and Mineki and Speedy and Jiffy Club all have them above their doors. It would be professional signage and it wouldn't be a cheap banner that I just made. I mean, is that something that could be allowed?
Do you have a comment on this?
I know the board's trying to steer away from them because they, they just don't seem to last very long and you know, they get torn. Are there ways that you can do a, a board-type sign that's a little more rigid and?
Yeah, I mean, I think it might be a little tougher. Obviously, I want to put an actual lighted sign on the building, I was saying, how, where Montori had it before. But the banners are just good because it creates new opportunity for, for specials and different things. And they're, they're high or up, they're visible. I mean, again, if we revisited it in six months, if there was a problem with them or we felt that they were in disrepair and I'm not doing anything about it, you know, and you guys wanted to take that away, I'd be fine with that. But I can 120% tell you that if a banner's ripped, I'm going to take it down, I'm going to replace it just based on the way I am, you know? I'm not going to leave anything where it doesn't suit the business or look proper to the community. Do everything in my power to make sure the place is better than 99% of what's around, in my honest opinion.
I think, you know, my main objection is when we have a pennant, pennant out at the end of the parking lot flapping around.
Oh, the banana signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, that's, that's my main objection and of course that the signage be professional, not hand-lettered or anything like that.
It could be subject to review, right?
We can, so we can do that, subject to review.
Try it out.
Remain having a professional signage only and then we'd have the opportunity to view what you're doing and make the judgment as to whether it's professional or not.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant before we move to decision? See none? So without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to move to discussion. I, I think there's a general indication that the board members are in favor of the application. And this is what I've been jotting down for conditions. Number one, no exterior storage of junk, motor vehicle parts or junk or inoperable or unregistered vehicles. Number two, not to be operated as a public nuisance. Means don't bother people too much. Little bit, not too much. Property to be kept clean of trash and debris and overgrowth, cut back and maintained. Hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days per week. Not going to limit the number of employees, but you do have a natural limit imposed by the number of parking spaces you have.
Yeah.
Professional signage only. You've submitted a parking plan, which I do think should be striped. So I'm going to propose, and we can have discussion on it if need be, provision that the parking spaces to be striped. And I would put that within let's see, by June 30th?
Yeah, yeah, so I want to get everything striped right away. As far as the parking plan itself, I know we had submitted the one that was more recent. If I need to get with somebody to have them do a measurement of the property and see, you know, what might suit the property better as far as parking? Or are we able to keep it to what Montori had had? I know on my John Fitch property, the lot was a quarter of the size of this and I had 23 legal spots. So the fact that this property is much bigger, and again, I'm not trying to create a junkyard, I never left cars outside there. I brought everything in at night, every day. It would be nice to have a little more accessibility to bring in business, you know, with the size of the building. If I only have X amount of spots and people are parking where they shouldn't be because it's not allowed, I'm going to lose business too. I'd like to be able to have that accessibility if possible. I mean, it is a good-sized parking lot.
So if we, we have to issue a judgment based on what's before us?
Yeah.
Right? So if we were going to look at that, we'd need a modified parking plan.
Okay.
And what I will say is that it's possible to request that the board modify its decision after the decision is issued, but we need a plan.
Yeah, I'll definitely get one. Again, I was trying to tread lightly on what I'm investing because I don't know how the meeting's going to go and I'm already spending a lot of money for this property that I can't do anything with. That's before insurance, that's before anything else, I'm paying 10 grand a month.
So I, I guess I would word the condition as parking spaces to be striped according to the September 1st, 2017 proposed parking layout. By June 30th, 2024, applicant may request modification of this provision from the zoning board at review. So in other words, you'll have an opportunity to?
And the review would be in six months, so I'll have to go with this plan first.
So should we have a, maybe we should have a sooner review for you then?
Yeah, I would, it would help because if I paint all these lines and then have a company come back and repaint them, if the modified plan works, it's going to look like a mess.
Okay. We're going to have a sunset clause? Which means if ownership, and you're currently in a lease situation, so I'm going to say ownership of the
Trying to buy it, yeah.
Yeah, ownership of the business. If ownership of the business is transferred?
Sunset clause will be to the applicant in this particular situation.
Is, are, do you operate under a corporation or an LLC at all?
LLC.
What's the name of the LLC?
John Fitch Exhaust.
Are you the sole owner right now?
I am. I am.
Okay. So it's John Fitch Exhaust LLC?
John Fitch Exhaust and Repair LLC.
So if there's a transfer of ownership of the business from Travis Bovee or John Fitch Exhaust and Repair LLC?
Yep.
Or a transfer of more than 20% of the ownership of the LLC?
And what exactly, it's my first time hearing this, so what exactly is a sunset clause? So I have a better understanding.
That means the special permit would expire, so if you sold the business to another person or entity, they would have to reapply.
Okay.
And then finally, a review date of May...
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth. Thank you, sir. Review date of May 14th.
Okay.
So that's two months out. I would expect that amount of time for you to get another plan?
Yeah. Yeah, that's not a problem. I'm going to look into that now.
Okay.
As far as if everything goes good with the 20-day period, what would be the actual day, the actual day I could open?
That's a question that has a lot of requirements that I can't fully answer because it's not just us, it's the building department and the certificate of occupancy. And I don't need, know if you need a fire department inspection or anything else. And I don't, other than knowing that you're not going to paint the exterior of the building, I don't know what work you have to do inside.
Yeah. I mean, technically, nothing really has to be done inside to open. I just wanted to clean it up and make it better, but if that's going to delay the opening, then I won't do it.
Yeah, if, I think the, would he be better served asking the building department that question?
Definitely.
All right, so to get an answer to that.
Yeah, okay.
So, all right. Any comment on the proposed conditions or additional conditions?
We have no outside storage of auto parts or inoperable vehicles, right? And all the sunsets to the applicant, we have dumpster location, professional signage, review or condition date. Are there going to be vehicles left outside overnight?
I didn't plan on it, but if I can't fit them inside, then there may be. But to be honest, I really don't want to leave anything outside just because of the train tracks and everything that, like I said, the building has been defeated in the last two weeks.
Yeah.
So I don't want to leave stuff out, but if somebody drops a car off at night, I'm going to do everything in my power to leave everything inside.
Thank you.
So I didn't list a condition as to the dumpster. Do you want to propose one?
I'd probably ask the applicant what his plan was. I don't...
So he said inside storage of the dumpster, except when...
Roll in, roll out.
Yeah, I was going to get one with wheels on it. Once the fence is done, then I'd put it in the fence, as long as the town approves the fence. You know what I mean? But in the meantime, I would just have one with wheels that, with the day they come to pick it up. I'd roll it outside so they can dump it.
Great. Thank you.
So condition 10 would be dumpster to be stored inside the structure or at the rear left corner of the property?
Yeah, inside the building or inside gated, if you wanted to put that fenced-in area.
Okay. Any other comment on the conditions? All right, I'd be looking for a motion on the allowance of this special permit as conditioned.
Okay. I'll make that motion, ZBA 2023-40 for Travis Bovee for the property at 180 Main Street for a special permit under 181-313-D12 with the conditions as stated by the chair.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Special permit is granted. Congratulations. I'll just let you know, by the way, that both the Health Department and FPD also commented in favor of this application, so they're fully in support. Again, we need to issue a written decision, file it with the city clerk, wait 20 days, and then the decision will be available. And then that will be required in order to move forward, at least on the certificate of occupancy for the business.
Yeah.
I would contact the building department as soon as possible to make sure that you understand what else needs to be done so you can move forward where you can. Remember that the special permit needs to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, you guys will record it there and then, that's it?
You will record it, sir.
I'll record it after I get it. Okay.
Yep.
And as far as the building department, at this point, I'm not even going to have any permits pulled until this is done. So once this is recorded, I need to go to them so they can walk the property to make sure it's able to be open? Okay?
And you can ask them what you can and can't do in the meantime.
In the meantime.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just giving you a suggestion on possibly moving the process forward as quickly as you can.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I had met with a contractor, and I was going to have them go to the town, pull permits, so we could start doing work inside the building. But it sounds like it doesn't make sense to do that at this time.
Well, I think...
If it's going to delay.
I would make, I would make the recommendation that you have high communication with the building commissioner
Yeah.
to figure out what you can do before you automatically assume that you can or you can't do anything.
Yeah, I understand. I'll do that. I'll visit that.
Okay. Mr. Bovee, very good luck with your business.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Madam Chair.
All right, now, Mr. Reynolds will be leaving us, unfortunately. His time here has expired.
Just for tonight.
For tonight.
Tonight.
Yeah, not in general, not in general. So for everybody here, what this means is that we are now a four-member board. We are able to go forward as a four-member board, but it does mean that if you don't have the unanimous consent of all members, it won't be approved. Whereas if there's five of us, you need four out of the five of us. Anyone who wants to delay until we are at a time where there is a five-member board is welcome to make that request. And if you are going to make that request, I'd suggest that you delay your presentation until we're a five-member board, rather than doing it twice. Mr. Reynolds, we appreciate the time you gave us today.
And for the applicants, I would stay longer if I could. I'm just not able to.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night. So we are now at approximately 8 o'clock. I'm just going to poll the matters that are here through 8 o'clock to see if anybody does want to delay until there's a five-member board. 493 Pearl Hill Road, do you want to continue or delay?
Yeah.
Okay. 78 River Street, continue or delay?
Continue.
Okay. 1030 Ashby State Road, continue?
No, I'll stay tonight.
You'll stay tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
672 to 678 Water Street, is anybody here? Okay. Who's that? Are you 672 to 678 Water Street?
481 Mechanic.
That's a little bit later. 133 Southwick Street, okay. So are you going to stay? Are you going to continue?
No, I was going to say yes.
Yes, okay. Great. So 481 Mechanic Street is here?
Yes.
Did you get my message? I take it not. And I can't discuss it until we get to 8:15 because that's your time. So, all right. We're going to move forward and do 493 Pearl Hill Road. This is ZBA 24-1. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181.4215 of the zoning ordinance to install an eight-foot-high vinyl fence along a portion of the northern edge of the property, exceeding the six-foot height limit pursuant to Section 181.94, located in rural residential. And I assume you are Nicole and Derek Shell, correct?
We are.
And that you reside in Pittsburgh?
We do.
And this is your primary residence we're dealing with?
Yes.
All right, so we have received your application, and most if not all of our board members have made a visit to your property. Why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about what you're asking for and why?
We're asking for the higher fence because being on Pearl Hill Road, our neighbors reside on the higher slope, so it slopes down to where we have recently put a pool in. So it's really basically for privacy and also security. There's a, I guess it was called the paper road, but there's an access to what used to be Lanny Orchards. I think it's had two owners since then. Periodically, there's construction that goes on, and it's also a popular unofficial hiking trail where people may decide to go for a walk, and we found empty beer bottles and whatnot. So that would be the security aspect of it. If it's going to be developed further than any construction, it's a very narrow access road, and we would just want a higher fence to protect not only the property in general, but the pool equipment that we have on the backside of a shed that would be on our side of the tire tracks, but on the inside of the fence.
Okay. And due to our discussion during my site visit, I understand that it's going to be, as you said, a vinyl fence along this side through to the end of the shed. And then you're going to do additional fencing that is chain-linked in the rear.
Right.
But that is not going to be visible from the road unless somebody looks really hard.
Correct.
Okay. And the reason that you are, need to seek this special permit is because the fence is eight feet instead of six feet. With six feet, you would not need it. Otherwise, we're not violating any setbacks, we're not too close, anything else?
Correct.
All right. I'm going to see if anybody else here has any comment. All right. Is there anybody here to comment on for or against this petition? And then I'm going to look online. If there is anybody here to comment on for or against this petition, please raise your hand. Okay. I see none. We do have some city comments that I'm going to read in. So the Health Department says that the property appears to be tied to municipal sewer and water. No other Health Department concerns with the project. Police Department states no concerns with the project. Planning states no comments. And then we did have a letter in support. This letter is from Mr. Desolets. And I apologize because I'm probably mispronouncing his name. Dear Ms. Tree, recently we purchased property on Pearl Hill Road, which includes the strip of land labeled Lanny Orchard on the plans submitted by the above applicants, making us directed butters. We are in support of our neighbor's request for a special permit to install an eight-foot-high vinyl fence along a portion of the northern side of their property, exceeding the six-foot height limit pursuant to the city zoning ordinance. We fully support the Shell's desire to improve and protect their property and hope the board will grant their request. Thank you, Eric and Margaret Desolet. Very nice support letter. So that is all the correspondence we have on this matter. At this point, I'm going to turn to my board members and see if they have any questions. Okay. Mr. Talbot, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I was out to the site, not most recently, but previous to this, and I noticed that the abutter was quite high. Usually in situations like this, I usually consider impeding airflow, but I think because they're so high, it wouldn't be an issue with the additional two feet that you're requesting in terms of height. So I think, I think it's a good plan, and I'm in favor of it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McLaughlin, any comments?
No, the applicant stated some good reasons and situations why this would be beneficial.
Okay, thank you. And I, having looked at the property, I am also in favor. There is a lane there, and you will need to take care to mind the boundary in the placement of the fence, and I would mark it once, mark it twice, mark it three times.
Sure.
Because you don't want to have that installed and then have somebody who has a right of way come through.
Right.
I agree that that lane seems to be mostly unused, and there's not any great detriment to visibility from the placement of the fence. And I do agree, due to the co-location and the topography of the land with the neighbors, further privacy is warranted. I was also pleased to understand that you are encircling the entire pool as a safety issue. Open pools always give me great concern for unexpected visitors.
Sure.
So. So I would be in favor of this project, so. Mr. McLaughlin, go ahead.
One quick comment. Just some feedback that the prior building commissioner had said to me one day. It's that sometimes neighbors are the Hatfields and the McCoys. So it's always a, not a requirement, but a good recommendation to allow a little bit of land so that you are able to go on to the other side of the fence and maintain it from both sides.
Absolutely.
Always remembered that.
It's good advice. We had another abutter here at the February 22nd meeting, and his question was whether the fence would extend to block the visual of the pool pump equipment. And you had answered that, yes, it would.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that, I think, was something he found favorable as it would block the visual and the noise. So, good fences, good neighbors. All right, then I'd be looking for a motion on the allowance of the special permit and the proposal of any conditions.
I'll make the motion under ZBA 2024-1 for Nicole and Derek Shell, property of 493 Pearl Hill Road, special permit under 181.4215 for the request for the installation of an eight-foot vinyl fence.
Okay. Any conditions proposed in that motion?
No, just that, you know, based on the special permit criteria has been met.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? You walk the board, the special permit is allowed. So again, we'll need to issue a written decision, needs to be filed with the city clerk, the 20-day appeal period needs to pass, and then you'll need to record the special permit decision at the Registry of Deeds. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you for coming. Good luck with the project.
Thank you for your time.
All right, calling the next matter, which is ZBA 23-38, 78 River Street, River Street Enterprises LLC and David Makia. This is a special permit under Section 181.313D4 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to establish a dog training elite facility, which is classified as a general service establishment pursuant to Section 181.94, located in the industrial district. Sir, can I assume that you are David Makia?
I am.
Very good. Thank you for coming to the meeting. And what is your city of residence?
Westminster.
Westminster, very good. So we have, I think, all been out to the property. And you understand that if we go forward tonight, you'll need all four members to vote for the special permit. Why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about what your request is?
So in addition to the facility being open as a dog training facility, one of the things that we would also require would be a kennel license to occasionally house dogs in the building. So that would be part of the application. If that wasn't clear in the application, then we'd take whatever steps we're going to do to clarify that.
So it wasn't clear in the application, and there's a difference in our ordinance. A dog kennel license is required with the overnight boarding, and the application described training, not the overnight boarding? training, not the overnight boarding? And it was not advertised under that section? So I will say that without advertising, we don't put anyone on proper notice. So what I would say is the choice is you can, we can modify the application, well, I can't, you can, to include both types of relief. We would need to re-advertise that, and then we would need to schedule you at the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Or you can file a separate special permit application, and we can go forward on the one you have tonight.
I think we should just go forward on the one that we have for tonight, and then I can file a second application for the kennel license. One point on the kennel license that I just wanted to mention, not that it makes that much of a difference to this, tonight's hearing, is we are required to have it in order to advertise services. So that's one, that was the primary driver behind the kennel license. We're happy to apply for it, go through the process, but...
And you're talking about the one required for zoning, not the one required from the Health Department, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so in your original question was describe what we do there in our business. So the primary function in that location is an administrative function for the offices to answer phones and do admin work. Employees show up to work on a daily basis, get their assignments, take their vehicles, and all of their training happens in-home in private sessions with their clients.
So the clients are being serviced off-site?
Off-site, yep.
Okay. All right. Are there any services that are going to be provided for the dogs on-site?
Well, without the, well, I guess we would if the kennel license is not required for visits, right? So occasionally, clients will come to our facility and have their private lessons one-on-one in our, in our facility in the back.
Inside the building?
Inside the building, yep.
Okay. How many employees do you anticipate having for the business?
Six.
One of the things I want to have a good understanding is you're going to be co-located with another business on that site, existing, it's Mosquito Squad.
That's correct, yeah.
And I think one of the questions that was kind of forwarded to you to be ready to address was the issue of how many parking spaces are there, and are there sufficient parking for both uses?
The total parking spaces, I believe we have about 140 on-site, and those were all existing in the parking lot plan from the previous business that was there. The needs for the business do fluctuate, and with the seasonality of the other tenant that's in the building, they typically have a lower parking requirement in the summer because those vehicles that are there currently that sit there during the day in the winter are out in the field. In the winter, the demand actually for idle vehicles goes up because some of the vehicles that are winterized or whatever may temporarily be there, but there is plenty of parking, there's dedicated spaces in the back. On the sketch drawing that I did in the back where there's 10 parking spaces is more than sufficient for the needs of that business.
So you'll have 10 that are dedicated to this use?
Yeah.
And does your 140 total include those 10?
Yeah.
Um...
In that 140, I'd go by memory, so I don't, off the top of my head, I don't really know the exact number, but...
How many, what's the square footage that is leased to the tenant, the other tenant?
The other tenant has 15,000 square feet.
And how many vehicles, how many service vehicles do they have stored on-site?
Currently, they have approximately 60.
And do you know how many employees?
As of today, they have probably 40 employees.
If you know, are the employees driving their parking and then using the business vehicles?
Most are, right, so...
You're not taking them home?
Some take the business vehicle home also, so it depends on the needs of their, you know, the business. But most of their employees will come to work with their personal vehicle, they take the company vehicle for the day and leave their personal vehicle, you know, in that space, and then when they come back, they swap them out.
And what's the square footage that's going to be occupied by this business?
3,000.
Is there any contemplation of doing any of the training? And I know you said the training on-site was occasional, but is there any contemplation of doing that outside at all?
No.
Only inside?
Inside, correct.
Even in the good weather?
Right.
Okay. And how many employees do you intend to have in this business?
Six.
Six employees. Did I already ask you?
You did, yeah.
Apologize.
That's all right.
Yeah.
It's after eight.
It is. It's the witching hour.
We're waiting for dinner.
We're going to be waiting a long time. So hopefully not too long, but it's not in the next 10 minutes. Okay. Is there anything else you want to add about your petition?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. You know, it's a low-impact business in the back of the building there, and there's no residents nearby, and, you know, it's not really a lot that can interrupt the neighborhood.
And the structure's kind of all set. You're not planning to do on any exterior modifications?
No exterior modifications in all building permits that have been pulled to do the interior modifications. Those that work has already been complete and permitted.
You already have a sign-up?
We do have a sign-up that was permitted, yeah.
Any other signage other than that? I will say, when I went and visited the site, it was difficult for me to determine how to approach that particular area and, you know, where that area was because of the other use that was going on in all of the parking spaces, and you kind of go around to the back. Have you given any thought to some directional signage?
I would certainly be open to putting directional signage up. The reason why we haven't is because it's really not a public office or a public location, it's more of a private location for administrative responsibilities. If someone is coming there, it's by invite only, so we don't get traffic, and it's really by design, you know, we're not visible from the road where there's a storefront or something of that nature, but happy to do it.
Is the appropriate approach as of coming from the street, from the left or from the right?
I think the easiest approach is from the left.
Okay. But you both, you own both of those kind of access routes?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Okay, I'm going to see if we have any public comment at this point in time. Is there anybody present who would like to speak on for or against this petition? Is there anybody online who would like to speak on for or against this petition? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I am going to read, we have a couple of city comments. So the first is from our good Chief Martineau. I would like to see a review by our Animal Control Officer who is tasked with kennel inspections in the city of Pittsburgh, asking if we could send this to Mr. Todd Pickett if appropriate, other than that, there is no concern with regards to traffic. And I think you responded to this? Yep. Todd has already performed an inspection. This was our first step. Please let me know if there's anything we can do to help. And then our chief said, thanks for your quick response. I'm glad to hear Todd has already performed an inspection, nothing else from PD. And then we have a communication from Mr. Pickett at Animal Control, and he says that he has no issues with it. I believe I did a kennel inspection for them last year.
Right, and that was, as it related to the kennel license as well, so that was what motivated that inspection, was in preparation for that.
Definitely listen to Mr. Pickett on the licensing other than the zoning that is required. Okay. So I'm going to turn to our board members. Mr. Talbot, any questions or concerns for the applicant? Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had visited the site actually about two months ago when I had spoken to you over the Little bit of background, myself coming from Tufts University School of Veterinary Medicine, I think the area is quite appropriate for what the applicant is looking to use it for. There's plenty of space. I like the fact that the entrance is actually in the rear. As you know, there can be some unruly dogs around people, so I look at it as like the entrance is somewhat private. For safety reasons, there's lots of space for them to work in, and 3,000 square feet is quite adequate, in my opinion, and I am in favor of it, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Yep.
Mr. McLaughlin, comments or questions?
No, it's a general service establishment request, low impact, low visibility. How long have you been in operation?
We've been in operation for one year.
Okay.
Yeah.
How come, what triggered this?
Well, we were unaware of the need for the special permit because of the type of administrative use that we had. We just made an assumption, it's the same as Mosquito Squad functionally, so it would be appropriate. And it was the kennel license that triggered all the special permits, and that education process started when Todd came in, and he said, oh, you need to get all these different special permits. We said, oh, okay. So that's what triggered everything.
But the Building Department gave you occupancy?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Well, appreciate it.
Yeah, I think we kind of went, we took, I guess, the building inspection part of it first, thinking that was the proper first step, when probably investing all the money in the building probably shouldn't have been done until we went and got the special permits first.
Yeah, yeah. So far, so good?
Yeah, it's so far, so good.
Thank you. No questions?
Okay. So I, you know, I, again, I'm in favor of the use, always glad to see a business open in Pittsburgh, and I'd be looking for a couple of safeguard conditions, you know, that, I think inside the building, you're not going to get any noise issues that are going to bother anybody else, especially considering what you're co-located with. I do think that you need some directional signage for anyone who is entering for the use. I do want to see the parking for this use striped and marked as parking for this use, so that would entail a sign indicating parking for this business. And I don't think you have, you're not going through site plan review on this proposal, right?
No.
Right. So given that, I would still want the professional signage condition to apply, and then there is a bit of overgrowth at the street on this lot, and it might just be seasonal overgrowth, but just a provision that the overgrowth be kept cut back and the lot be kept clear of trash.
On the front, near the sidewalk?
Yes, front near the sidewalk.
Okay.
So sometimes it grows over in November because it's warmer than we think it's going to be, and then we get around to it in April.
Yep.
All right. If that's it, I am going to move towards a motion. Mr. McLaughlin, do you want to recite some conditions?
I don't really have any other than what you've stated.
Okay.
But I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay. You're quite welcome. I will make the motion under ZBA 2023-38 for River Street Enterprises LLC for the property at 78 River Street for a special permit under 181.313D24 as requested, with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And I'm just, because we went through those a little quick, I'm going to repeat the conditions. Not to be operated as a public nuisance, all training to be conducted inside the structure. Number three, parking for this use to be striped and marked as parking reserved for this use. Number four, directional signage to be installed on-site. And I'm going to leave it up to you how that signage takes place.
Okay.
And number five, professional signage only. Number six, site to be kept cleared of overgrowth and trash. And I don't propose that we need a review date. Does any board member desire review?
No.
Okay. So we're simply going to have a provision that says permit holder is subject to recall upon reasonable notice at the election of the board for review of the special permit So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Special permit is granted, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck with the business.
Thanks.
No sunset clause? Did not, we did not discuss the sunset clause? Says no sunset clause.
I'm concerned because there's not really going to be any animals on-site, but he will be back for the kennel. At that time, we can address that.
Yeah. I agree. I think it's...
This is really just office.
It's office space for the most part, so... All right. So it is 8:15 PM or thereafter. I'm just going to make the comment on 481 Mechanic Street. There was a use variance requested. The request was for a use variance, correct?
The reason I want to comment is that... Can I, I'm hard of hearing, so can I...
So I'm speaking to you informally. I haven't opened the hearing yet, but you requested a use variance.
Yes.
And this property is located in the residential A district.
Yes, we know that.
And the board by ordinance is prohibited from granting a use variance in a residential district.
We're aware of that. We did a full review.
Okay.
But I think we do have grounds for appeal.
So you'd prefer to address this as an appeal of the decision?
Well, I'm trying to point out some discrepancies with the accessory unit by law and then the single-family district regulations, and appealing to some of the conflicts. So in other words, in the accessory unit, you have that by right in the bylaw?
Yep.
Whereas you don't with the single-family zoning area. So what happens here is we have...
So I don't want to have you do the whole presentation right now.
So we have no other way to appeal other than the way we did.
Okay. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, that as the application, I saw it wasn't able to, it's not something we can allow. I didn't want, I didn't want to have you wait here for a long time. If you want to address it the other way, we can hear it that way.
My point is, if we were under the accessory uses by right, so we didn't really know what's way to go in terms of having an opportunity to address the situation to you.
Okay.
And so that's why it was presented that way. So I was going to present the situation and show you where we're having the difficulties and see if we can get some relief for these people.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so I'll have you sit down now. We'll hear your... We'll hear your matter in turn. I just wanted to see if that was, make sure you understood, given that you're waiting. All right, the next matter is ZBA 24-4, Stephen Saney, 1030 Ashby State Road. This is a request for a dimensional variance under Section 181.93 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to construct an addition, which is a garage, along the left side encroaching along the minimum setback, which is required from 25 feet leaving 12 feet. So, I think you're saying you want a 12-foot setback on the existing single-family structure pursuant to 181.416 located in the rural residential district. All right. Sir, you are Stephen Saney? All right, and can you just let us know for the minutes your city of residence?
Stephen Saney, 1030 Ashby State Road, Fitchburg.
Okay. So, this is your residence?
Personal residence, yes.
All right, go ahead, sir. Let us know what you're looking for.
Just would like to put a 16-by-24-foot garage with one room above it on the left-hand side of our house.
And I know you to be a person involved in the building trades.
Say that again, ma'am.
I know you to be a person involved in the building trades, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So, as you know, if we have a dimensional variance to grant, we have the criteria that we have to meet in order to consider the request for the variance. Can you address those? And that is that there has to be an issue with the soil, with the topography, with the shape of the lot, or with an existing structure that is unusual in the district, so not everybody has the same issue, that causes a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and then that the relief can be granted without derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance. Are you prepared to address those criteria?
Sure.
And let me just say that the variance is a creature of state statute, not of local zoning ordinance. And the state statute requires that we, that the petitioner show us an issue with soil, shape, topography, or existing structure in order for us to move forward. And it's sometimes, it's sometimes a difficult criteria to meet. But please go ahead and let us know.
I don't think there's any issues with any of them.
Yeah.
I think they're... I don't really know what you mean by an issue. It says, I guess...
So, there is, there is some condition related to the soil, the shape of the lot, the topography, or the structure that creates a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise?
If you don't allow it.
Well, clearly, if we don't allow it, but is there a condition there? So, an example...
Okay, so you're saying is there a, is there a condition that would cause it to be a financial hardship to put it where we want to?
Well, that's what you're asking us, so, yes.
There's no problem with the soils or topography. It's... In keeping with the shape of the land right there, there's no, there's no issue with construction on it. It's a normal construction process there.
I'll give you a, for instance, of a gentleman...
You're looking for an answer, but I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure what you're exactly looking for. There's no issues with the site.
I'll give you an example of a gentleman who came to us who did have an issue.
Who did or didn't?
Who did.
Did have an issue, okay.
Need to be closer to the mic. Who did have an issue and was granted a dimensional variance. So, the home was built on a strip of land that had a 25 or 30-foot drop right behind it. And the strip of land was maybe 20 feet in depth from the road. And he wanted to build a carport, but he didn't meet the front yard setback. And he couldn't because if he met the setback, the carport would be down in the canyon below him. And he was getting older and the removal of snow from the car, if there was no way to store it undercover, would create a physical hardship for him. And that was a case where we found there was an issue with, in that case, topography because of the drop-off that created a hardship that would allow us to consider a variance. I'm going to move to public comment and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have any board, city department comment on this? Okay. Is there any person present in the audience who would like to make a comment on for or against this petition? Is there any person online who would like to make a comment on for or against this petition? Please raise your hand. Okay. See none? I'm going to go to comment from my board members or questions to you. Mr. Talbot, any comments or questions on this application?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
At this point, no.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Is the house built or is it being built?
House is built.
House is built. You live present?
Eleven years ago.
Presently live in it?
Correct.
And it's about 70,000 square foot?
The lot size? Correct, yes. I would, yes. 66,297.
Yeah, just kind of rounding it off. There's no garage there?
I have, we have a two-stall garage under, on the front of the house.
Okay, under the house. Do you have construction vehicles on the site?
My work truck that I go back and forth to work in, yes.
Okay, that's it?
I've got a skid steer there. My small equipment that I keep for use on my property.
Okay.
We also own 60 acres behind there, so...
Same lot? Different lot?
No, different lot. I have three, one, two, three, four, four sold lots back there. So, I keep that, you know, for my personal use here. I don't keep it there for any business use at all. If that's what the, if that's where the question was going, no business use there at all. I have a place of business in the city of Fitchburg.
Okay.
Any questions? So, I, I think we're going to move to discussion, but before we do that, just going to ask you whether you would like to continue this to try to answer those questions.
I'd like to kind of understand, like, there's, if there's a... I want to say there's no issues with... Trying to figure out exactly what your question is about the issues. I feel like there should be an issue so that you can give me a variance.
And let me see...
If I say that there's an issue with topography or whatever else, I, you can't put any, I can't put a garage anywhere else on the site. If I wanted to put it somewhere else where there was no dimensional problem, I can't do it because of topography and soil conditions. Like, I can't put a garage in the front of the house, anywhere on the front of the property, even if it was, even if it was a detached garage. Can't do that because of topography and site. So, that's the, it makes sense. The driveway's right there. We have, that's where our garage is right now. We just want an extra garage space.
So, describe the issue with the topography to me.
If we don't put it there, we, it'd be impossible to put it somewhere else.
Why?
Because if you, the site, we have ledge all in the front of the property. Driveway on both sides, you know, has ledge. And backyard is a septic system. Can't put it in the backyard. And there's no other place to put it if that's, we can't put it on any, any other place on the site.
So, I'm just going to go through this because you do, you have a lovely setback of 161 feet from the road, right? And throughout from, and I think the front back required is... So, the front setback required is 40 feet. So, you have 120, 120 feet to play with there. And the issue there is ledge? Is that the issue?
Yes, yes, correct. Yes, the driveway goes, if you're, if you're looking at it, the driveway goes up on the left-hand side of the lot, almost at the property line, very close to it. And the whole right-hand side, this whole, the whole large area in the front is, is all ledge.
Okay. And there's, you have 69 feet plus or minus to the right boundary.
Correct. Same, same exact situation. It's all ledge.
How did you build the house?
A lot of difficulty. We hammered out the foundation and the driveway.
I mean, is there ledge where it is?
Yes.
And there's, is there ledge where you're proposing to put the garage?
No.
You have a, you have a little area where there's no ledge on the property? Is that it?
Only because I know what I built there. I know that there's nothing on that side of the house.
Okay. And if we looked at taking that garage and attaching it to the back of the house instead of to the side of the house on that corner, what's the issue with putting it there?
There's a septic system in the backyard. We have a porch in the back. Our deck is in the back, right in the back of the house. So, we can't, doesn't fit back there. And then it would ruin all the windows in the back of the house. Wouldn't be able to see the backyard. Wouldn't be able to use the backyard.
Okay. All right.
From a construction standpoint, that's the only place we can, we can put it.
And can you tell me if there's ledge underneath? And I assume you're pouring a concrete pad, not digging a foundation?
No, it'll be a full frost wall.
Okay. Because it, because there's going to be some living space in there?
No, just code requirements.
Code requirements?
Yep.
Good thing I'm not a building inspector. Okay. I think that's, I think that's all of the questions that I'd have. I'm going to again ask if any other board member has a question after that discussion.
I would probably recommend a site visit based on the size of this lot if the applicant is stating that there are hardships.
So, when you put your application in, you did not answer these questions. You did not cite any hardships. And so, I agree that a site visit to see the hardships, now that you've talked about them, would be appropriate.
Right.
Would pictures help for tonight? Oh, actually, I don't have pictures of the rest of the site, just... I'm more than happy if you guys want to set something up, come up and take a look at it and if...
So, I think what I'd like to do is continue this to our April meeting and have, have you schedule a site visit through the Building Secretary. We're not all going to come at once. But if you can give a few times where you'll be available on-site, usually not Monday through Friday, nine to five, because we all work. And we'll schedule a time where we'll all go up there and separately, but look at the property with you before the April meeting, okay?
Do you guys typically do site visits on certain days scheduled? Kind of like conservation does?
Not, we're not, we don't schedule like confradation, conservation...
Flexible.
We're flexible. But usually...
Would the whole board like to come?
We can't attend at once because it would be a quorum.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, we attend separately.
Okay.
So, that's why if you give us a couple dates, at least one of which is a weekend day, that would be good. And our April meeting date is April the 9th. Okay. So, at this point, I'd look for a motion from the board on a continuance.
Make a motion on ZBA 2024-4 for the applicant Stephen Saney, property 1030 Ashby State Road for a continuance until, what was it, April?
Nine.
April 9th.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
And while we're engaging in discussion on this motion, before we take our vote, we need you to sign an extension agreement extending any deadlines on this case. And so, the extension is through the month after, just in case we have any kind of delay or you can't attend. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? So, we're continued to April the 9th. Please feel free to call or email Jessica and she will set you up.
What's the best form of communication?
She does it all.
Okay. So, any, any form of communication?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, the next matter we're going to call is ZBA 24-5, 672 to 678 Water Street. Jonathan, Jonathan Calcerada. And this is a request for a special permit under Section 181.313-D12 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to open an auto repair, motor vehicle repair shop pursuant to Section 181.94 located in the Neighborhood Business District. Is the applicant here today? And I assume that the applicant is not one of the people online? If so, raise your hand. Okay. Give this a short minute.
Thank you for coming down. Would like to invite other members of the council to experience the meeting. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move on and we can come back to this matter if need be. The next matter is ZBA 24-6, 133 Southwick Street, Phil Colometta. This is a request for a special permit under Section 181. Did Mr. Colometta just exist?
He just left, I think, to tell the people.
Okay.
Who was in everyone?
Request for a special permit under Section 181.335 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance, seeking relief of the zoning setbacks on the left front yard encroaching from 8.6 to 6.9 where there is a 30-foot minimum requirement on the existing single-family structure pursuant to Section 181.416 located in Residential A. Mr. Colometta? Your turn is up. Thank you for coming back in. All right, if you have a seat at the table so we could all hear you. Thank you.
Evening, board.
All right. And if you can just let the board know your city of residence for the minutes.
Lunenburg, ma'am.
All right, and if you can, please go forward and let us know a little bit about the relief you're seeking today.
So, seeking relief of a foot and a half on the left-hand side of a new construction house and a foot and a half on the rear setback. We purchased a property, 133 Southwick, and upon further inspection, we realized it was, it was a tear-down. We put the new, we placed the new concrete in position and I made a mistake by setting it too far left and too far back. I took in consideration that it didn't have off-street parking and we pushed it back as far as I could by creating, and we created two spots dedicated off-street parking. The right-hand side is my only neighbor. We're, I think, a little over five feet away from his lot line and the rear setback is to a undeveloped vacant parcel. So, again, it's my mistake that we kind of shifted it a little bit too far from the existing footprint of the existing house. I don't know if you guys have the documents for the existing survey and then we, you do have... So, you'll see that the house was kind of kiltered sideways to the, to the street. And one of the setbacks was five and a half feet off the right-hand side. We made that a little bit better. So, all, all the setbacks are still non... So all, all the setbacks are still non-conforming. We encroached the left and the right, the left and the rear by a foot and a half. Not intentionally, but it was a mistake. I kind of set like my truck there and said, it kind of looks good. Because if we came a foot and a half further to the road, probably a full-size truck wouldn't fit in seventeen feet of driveway. So seeking relief of a foot and a half on the left-hand side, which is a paper street and the rear setback of a non-conforming lot.
Okay. Thank you. I am going to attempt to put the visual up on screen for the plan. So this right here is the plan of the existing conditions before the house was torn down, right?
Correct.
And so as the house stood, it was a pre-existing non-conforming structure because it didn't meet setbacks. And how long ago did you tear it down?
I believe it was October.
Of last year?
Of this past year, yes.
Okay. So it's been less than two years since the tear down?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Is that Section Street that's marked? And of, of course, I did see the conditions of what it is. And that's at, at the top end of Southwick Street?
Correct.
No other houses beyond it, no other road beyond it. Is this a paper street according to the city or a private wide of way owned by another person?
On Section Street? I believe it's a paper street.
Okay. Do you know who owns the surrounding properties?
On the left-hand side, so I, 133 Southwick owns to the center of this paper street and the other side is Oak Hill Country Club.
Okay.
Yep.
So there's no further development or residential structures contemplated, at least for a while?
Correct.
And because that matter isn't before this board, that's not where the solar array is going?
Yeah.
No?
Say it again?
That's not where the solar array from Oak Hill is going?
I'm not aware of the solar.
Okay.
But I don't believe so.
I don't, I don't believe so either. But, and does Section Street or that way lead to any other owned property in the back that's not Oak Hill?
I believe Michael Street, which runs parallel with Southwick, which has stopped further down towards, is it Bullstone down there?
Yep.
It's quite a ways down. I don't believe there's any development going on down there.
Yeah. What I, the reason I'm asking these questions is what is the potential for other development to go in that's going to use this access road?
Right.
All right. So I went out to see the house that was built. Lovely house.
Thank you.
Great house. And it's currently up for sale, right?
Yeah, we're under PNS. We have a...
You're under PNS?
Yeah, the buyers are anxiously waiting this decision.
What's the, at least the currently agreed to closing date?
It was supposed to be, well, I guess, it was about a month ago, but we extended it to the twenty-one day appeal pro, appeal period after this. So we have our final inspection. We just didn't, when we went for occupancy, it was brought to my attention that I needed to go in front of this board. So if you, if, if you have all the documents, I submitted the as-built from the existing, the new foundation on 1031, I believe, or 1030 it was submitted on the portal. And then two weeks later, we received a building permit to construct. I would have addressed it at that point, not have a full house.
It's, you know, it's one of those things where it's this little thing and then the, the fix is massive, right? I'm going to see, yep, I should be able to bring up the as-built so we can look at that on screen as well. Does, is the driveway dimensionally conforming for two cars?
Well, it's, it's nineteen point eight feet from the street edge.
It's really more the width I was curious.
Widthwise, I think it's twenty-plus feet wide. It's from the center of the house to the, almost the right, past the right-hand corner.
Okay. Yeah. And dimensional would be nine by eighteen.
Correct.
So if it's twenty feet wide, then you have the eighteen feet needed that way. Okay. I am going to go to public comment now and then we'll come back. Is there anybody present who would like to make a statement on for or against this petition? Seeing none, is there any person online who would like to make a statement on for or against this petition? Please raise your hand. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to go to our board members. Mr. Talbot. I apologize. Before I do that, I'm going to read the city comments. This is from our building inspector, the good John Morielli. "I have been the local inspector throughout the project, including the demo of the old structure, but the building commissioner did change. The new structure was built just a little outside the allowable building area. Apparently, the builder tried to tweak it a little to improve the parking spots in the front and then it ended up on the outside of the allowable area. The building department was made aware of this after we received the as-bills for the placement of the new structure. Attached are the inspection results. It is my opinion that the tweaking of the structure is a benefit to the property and the city of Pittsburgh, but I am not the deciding factor in this case. Any other concerns, please reach out." And then we did also just have an email from Mige Mortella, which I believe is the purchaser on this property. "We're contacting your office because my husband and I have signed a purchase and sales for 133 Southwick. We are aware that this property did not receive the certificate of occupancy because of the zoning issue with the front of the house being built too close to the road. It's not that, it's the side. We were told that during the building process inspectors changed. This issue has raised some red flags for us and we would like to be able to see the other inspection sign-offs prior to the hearing tomorrow night." And then she states her availability. Please let me know when you can read those. And did she have an opportunity to review those? Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Talbot, now if you do have any questions or comments, you're welcome them.
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. To the applicant, I went up and looked at the site on Southwick Street and it appears that it dead-ends there. Is that right? The street actually ends there. But then there's, but is the Section Street, is that a paper road or?
Paper street, correct.
Yeah, because it's not apparent. To your knowledge, who is that street supposed to benefit? People over on Michael Street or what is, what is the next street down?
It would be Michael Street, correct.
I like the fact that you put good parking in front of the building. So, you know, you certainly improved the situation by doing that. I have no problem with it. I think it's, I think it's a beautiful building that you built, so.
Thank you.
No further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McLaughlin?
Very, very minimal request and, you know, it's, it's allowed by special permit. We have some specific language in the bylaws with regards to non-conforming, single and two. So I would be in favor of it.
So I am generally in favor of this as well. I just have some concerns about future building owners not being aware of the boundary issue. Are the, are there pins set at the corners?
There is a pin set on the front left corner near the hydrant in the asphalt.
Okay. Would you be opposed to setting two more pins along that boundary line?
Not opposed to that. And there might be even something on the right-hand side. And I know we have always had a great stake in the back-left corner that's always been maintained, but it's not an actual pin. It's a great stake.
Right, right. I mean, you know, when you're talking about a homeowner, not a builder or surveyor, a granite marker is always like a visible reminder of where the boundary is. I don't necessarily want to make you do that, but I, I think I would like the additional pins set so that there are four pins equidistant along that eighty-seven-foot left-hand boundary line. I know it's usual to set pins at the corner and not at the, not along the line. But I would like some way of marking that and making it known or findable in the future. So...
So can we, can we maintain the one in the front and then put one in the rear?
Maintain the one in the front, put one in the rear. And what I'd be looking for again is two more so that the entirety of the line... And I, I wouldn't be opposed as if we, instead of a pin set, had again a small granite marker visible above the ground that just marked that.
I mean, couldn't they just measure off six point nine feet from the foundation and that's what they know?
I have no doubt that any building professional would do that. I have no doubt that any homeowner is not going to do that. Yeah. So I'm just trying to avoid, you know, somebody building a fence in the future and building it out in the roadway and then for some reason that becomes active and we have a problem with their removal. I, I'd be open to other suggestion for the marker. You know, we could talk about a fence along that line, but I don't really want to do that because I think that's a bigger expense.
Sure.
But if you have another suggestion on a marker, willing to hear it.
Pins are fine. Four pins.
Pins, four pins. Okay. Appreciate it. All right. Unless there's any other comment, I'd be looking for a motion with suggested condition that the applicant ensure that there are surveyors' pins set, four surveyors' pins set equidistant on the left boundary, including the pins set at the corners.
So the four corners plus four on the left-hand side?
I'm only concerned about this one side of the property.
Okay.
So if I'm, if I'm looking at the plan that is up here, front-left corner?
Yep.
Back-left corner?
Yep.
And two equidistant pins in between them?
Four in total.
Four in total.
Yep.
Yeah, the other corner...
There's one now.
Right.
Yep.
And so the one now is fine? That can be part of the four.
Okay.
All right. Motion, please?
I'll make the motion under ZBA 2024-6 for Phil Colometta at 133 Southwick Street with a special permit. Request under 181.335 as requested with the conditions as stated by the chair.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Passes? Again, it's just a wonderful building project.
Thank you.
And hopefully, hopefully no more of these issues ever arise for you. But thank you for the contribution.
Is it twenty-day or twenty-one-day appeal process?
So the written decision has to issue and get filed with the city clerk. On the day it gets filed with the city clerk, we have to wait twenty days because that's the opportunity for somebody to appeal. And at the twentieth day, the final decision can issue. You'll need to record the special permit at the Registry of Deeds and that will also get you the, barring any other issues, certificate of occupancy. So...
Do I go and get the decision from the clerk or is it?
We, once the chair woman signs it, I mail a copy to, and I upload it to the portal as well. So you will be able to see that, you know, once it's uploaded.
Okay. But I don't have to do anything until the twentieth, oh, the twentieth day after, after it's uploaded?
After it's uploaded, yes.
Okay. Take your time.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. So the next matter we're going to call is ZBA 24-7, 481 Mechanic Street. This is a request for a variance under Section 181.93 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to construct a two-family dwelling pursuant to Section 181.313 located in Residential A.
Madam Chair?
And I'm going to stop sharing so we have things back.
Water Street?
Yes. They were not here at call, so I will get back to them.
At the end of the...
Mm-hmm. All right. Welcome to the meeting.
Good evening.
All right. If you can each tell us your name and city of residence, please.
Garrett Patterson, Pittsburgh, Mass.
Okay.
Susan Patterson, Pittsburgh, Mass.
Okay.
And I'm Robert Therion. I'm their architect. And this is my associate who's helped me with this application. The Pattersons asked us to give them some assistance. And so...
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Therion, and also to your assistant, who is?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're always glad to see professionals in here helping with an application, so...
I'd like to address the board. I'm a member of the planning board as well in Thompson. And whenever we have a client, our role is to do whatever we can to meet what their objectives are. One of the things we do in the beginning is review the zoning with the client. So the Pattersons are fully aware of the current zoning bylaws. We've explained it to them. They understand how it works and why. And we've been in constant communication with you. You and Matthew Ducey has been the, the lead person making the communications. So here, in this instance, we have already presented to you the circumstances of this family and what they're trying to do. We've already presented to you things about the project. We have that all available here again in case the public wants to see it. But you hit on the real focus of the problem as far as how the bylaws are written. And, and what you, so what you as a planning board face the same things that I do on my own planning board in Thompson.
We're the zoning board.
Huh?
We're the zoning board, but we understand the kinship.
Well, they're similar, yes, in that way. So, so based on the hardship scenario and the things about the neighborhood and, and all that stuff, there's nothing there that would be, in my view, detrimental to the neighborhood. So the real issue comes down to the right of use for an accessory unit. And when those bylaws are prepared, the communities try to find a mechanism so that people can put additions on their house to accommodate other family situations. And those needs are actually far more dominant today than they were when we wrote these bylaws. So when we look at this, and the reason we appealed this way, because as an accessory use in this neighborhood, or not accessory use, as an accessory unit in this neighborhood, they're entitled to a by right and none of this would have been necessary. However, this is a virgin lot that this family purchased many, many years ago with the intent of building a home, not knowing if their son was going to build it or if they were going to use it or whatever. But at the time, it was an opportunity for them to prevent somebody else from building right next to them and it was an opportunity to invest in their own real estate, although they didn't really ever have an opportunity to execute on it. to execute on it. So what we have today is a scenario where we have a new building being planned, so it doesn't really fit into what the intent of the accessory unit was. Most of those were meant to allow an addition on an existing building based on square footage of that building and other parameters that the town decides would be useful or important. So now we have a brand-new building. So this building, the footprint of the new home and the topography of the back of the lot makes an ideal location for Garrett to be able to put a unit in there for his mother. So the real difference is, is the square footage here that's related to the accessory unit versus what he has available that he can provide a bigger space for his mother. And so those are the kind of instances that we have to present in an appeal so that you can understand the situation and maybe find some relief to make that happen for him. So from a logistical sense, you would say, all right, well, Garrett, you can build a single-family home and then come back and do the accessory unit, but he's already paying for that square footage in his house anyway. So the, the thing is, the only obstacle here is the limit on the square footage allowed for the unit. And so this was discussed with the Pattersons very completely. And so they, you know, I try to prevent my clients from taking unnecessary burdens, but it's very important to them. It's a life-changing thing, a life-changing decision for them about how to be able to do this project and what's going to happen in their future. So that's why we're here today, saying, is there some relief that we can do? It may not have to be a variance, but a special permit for this condition because of this situation. And the fact that the space is there, what is the harm in providing it all just as it was in the accessory unit? And that's the basis of our presence here today. And it's really the priority consideration here. And then if we can deal with that, then we can deal with any other questions about the project itself. So I am here only because I, I've experienced these same kind of difficulties with different factors in a zoning bylaw. And in, in today's world, the use, the needs for accessory units are becoming more and more so because we have a lot of families that have single parents with children now that have nowhere to go but in their homes. We have older people that have larger homes that want to sell them to their children and then build a unit for them. So there's so many different family profiles and such a difficult time finding housing for them that I wanted to appeal to this board to use the Pattersons as an example. And maybe you can find a way, or we can find a way to accommodate them and, and it will also give you some more insight as to the zoning bylaws you have and how you may implement them or rethink them to deal with these. Because we all know it was either thought of being a single-family home or an existing home as a necessary unit. And so this is kind of not either one of them. And anyway, that's my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions and tell you what we did and the effort that's been put in here to, to make sure that this building will be totally harmonic with the neighborhood. So again, not knowing what kinds of things or questions would be here, we have exhibits and everything that we can present to people. But the bottom line is, just as the chairwoman says, this is the conflict that we have. And, and I appeal to you to hear us out and think about it. Thank you.
Can I ask you, before we move on to any public comment, you said this is a virgin lot?
I'm so bad at it.
You said this is a virgin lot, it's never been built on?
Yes, it is. In fact, it's one of the larger lots in the whole neighborhood. I have some statistics here. First of all, the Pattersons live in a seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight-square-foot home, which is a budding this property. It's a very tiny home. And so it's always been the desire to have a bigger house. And then.
Will it be demolished?
No. We're not sure, depending how things work here, how that's going to play out, but.
It all boils down to funding.
Is that existing home depicted on this plan at all?
But let me give you some information here.
I think it is mentioned.
They have a virgin lot. It's a large build-able lot, and it has fifty-two thousand square feet. And based on the minimum lot sizes for that neighborhood, it would be twelve-thousand-five-hundred square feet for a minimum. In other words, you have a lot that size, met all the other requirements, you could have a unit there.
Do I see correctly that the frontage is twenty-eight point six-six feet?
Right. It wasn't complied by front, in terms of frontage.
So we're not, this is not a five and, five, five thousand square foot, fifty feet of frontage lot that might be exempt under section six?
The lot itself is fifty-two, fifty-two thousand square feet, which is over an acre.
Twenty-point-nine acres.
Right.
Right, but under chapter forty-eight, section six, it's not a virgin lot that has at least five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage? Right?
I think you're speaking of virgin lot as a technical term.
Yep.
When he said virgin lot, he wasn't speaking the, that particular term that you were referring to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate the clarification.
So if we use the standard.
What's the frontage of the lot? How many feet?
How many feet?
Yes.
The square footage of the lot?
No.
How many, how many feet of frontage does this proposed lot have?
It's in the site.
It's twenty-eight point six-six feet at the front. It's a rear lot, so there's a panhandle here.
Right.
Do you have access to the site plan?
So I'm looking at this document, right?
Yes, that's right.
Yep. And I'm just going to note that there's a lot at the right front that is also marked Patterson. Do you also own that lot?
That's where the existing house is.
That's where the existing house is.
Forty-seven Mechanic Street.
Right.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a legal build-able lot. I mean, we could have just gone and got a permit to build a new house. And it is wedged between two other lots with a long driveway that's about, what, eight-hundred feet long or?
It's a lot of that.
And, and then the property comes out into this large, open, undisturbed area. It's all woodland. And so what I was pointing out, that the standard for the neighborhood is a minimum lot size of twelve-thousand-five-hundred. So he is probably one of the biggest lot owners in the whole neighborhood. And with that standard, if it were multifamily, for example, he'd be able to put four or more units in it. And so I wanted to just show you proportionately the differences between most of the buildings in the area and his particular lot. So the lot isn't typical to the other buildings in the area, and within a hundred-and-eighty feet away from the lot, there is a small commercial business, special permit that was there. So it's not like a suburban area or anything. And then almost, I just wanted to point out some things to, can you just hold it up and I'll point things out?
Just call out a few of the areas that he's talking about right here.
So this is the property we're referring to. You can see the long driveway and the big open space. All of this is unbuild-able because of conservation and stuff. So the other houses surrounding all have small lots, smaller lots. And then two-hundred and eight, two-hundred and eight feet.
This is a new speedway.
We're in a neighborhood that has high-density housing.
This is residential B right here, where two families are allowed by rights.
Right.
So what we're talking about is how come, if you can have two units in a small little lot as a accessory use, and now you have a larger lot that you're going to build a new house on, why would that person be restricted to eight-hundred square feet in size?
Because that's the terms of the ordinance, that, that's the terms of the ordinance.
That's correct.
That we don't, because the, the change from the accessory dwelling unit to the two-family, we don't have the ability to allow it. We don't have the ability to allow the different use.
Why?
Because our ordinance prohibits the granting of use variances in residential districts. If you were looking for a dimensional variance, that is something we can consider. But we cannot consider, we are prohibited from allowing a use variance under any conditions of any kind in a residential district.
Imagine you were not caught because you didn't know the procedure. But if we can change that petition to allow an increase in square footages for this particular house, everybody, just make everything work.
So let me take a moment and review the conditions that are in the ordinance with the accessory dwelling unit and understand what it is that you might need relief on so that we can consider whether it's something we can take into account.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
So we need a plot plan of an existing dwelling unit and proposed accessory apartment. And I think the issue is it's not existing.
I'm sorry. I'm still bad.
So, condition number one, and this is in section one-eighty-one point three-two-one-two sub-C. Condition one is that we need a plot plan. Need the other glasses? Getting bad when you have to switch glasses out. A plot plan of the existing dwelling unit and proposed accessory apartment shall be submitted to the building commissioner or the board of appeals showing the location of the building on the lot, the proposed accessory apartment, septic system. And I think your, your issue there is the building is not existing, right?
Right.
So there's a question about needing relief from the provision that it be existing.
In our submission, we prepared a full permit set of drawings with the site plan showing the main unit and what would be the second unit or the accessory unit, whatever way it can fit in. And so we had this confusion, there really two units in the accessory building situation, but only one in a single-family situation. So is this going to be a two-family or is it going to be an accessory unit?
And I don't want to derail us too much, I want to go through these conditions. Certification that one of the two dwelling units will be occupied by the owner of the property. Is that going to be the case?
That's correct.
So that you're going to meet that?
Both of them would actually.
Not more than one accessory apartment on the lot, which shall not exceed eight-hundred square feet inhabitable floor area.
That's the killer.
What is the proposed floor area?
Fourteen-hundred.
What's the proposed floor area of the main?
Pardon me?
So we have one unit that we would treat as accessory, and you want that to be fourteen-hundred square feet?
That's right.
And the other unit, how many square feet would that be?
Do you remember, Matthew? It's a little larger, it's like twenty, twenty-eight. That would be about, I would say roughly two thousand square feet. Does that sound all right?
Around two thousand square feet.
Roughly, yeah.
So you would want relief of an additional six-hundred square feet?
That's correct.
Okay. The external appearance of the structure is, shall not be significantly altered from the appearance of a single-family structure. So would it look like a single-family structure?
Yes, we designed that deliberately. Also, the way the bylaw writ is written, it means the accessory addition would complement the architecture of the building that's already there. This is a new building, so it doesn't kind of, the intent is different.
So then we have a requirement that any new area would not be more than fifteen percent of the gross floor area? I'm not sure that would apply here because it's all new construction.
Right.
Stairways shall be enclosed or screened so that they're not visible?
That's true. The building's designed so it looks like a single-family home. It has one entrance in the front. So from the street, first of all, from the street, if you drive down the road, people don't even know that. Grab the street.
Okay. And then how many parking spaces?
Four.
All right. So from what we just reviewed, we would be looking at a request to vary from the requirement that an accessory dwelling unit be to an existing property, an existing structure?
To a new structure.
To increase the amount of square footage in the accessory dwelling unit to fourteen-hundred square feet. And then the requirement relating to no increase of fifteen percent over the existing structure, I think you'd just be looking to waive that.
So I think what we're doing is asking for accessory use to exceed the eight-hundred limit and within a maximum limit of fourteen-hundred square feet.
Okay. So I, did I ask for public comment yet?
No.
All right. I'm going to go to public comment right now. Okay? Is there any person here, other than the applicants, who would like to speak on for or against this petition? All right. Sir, if you can give up the podium for a moment, thank you. Can you state your name and city of residence?
Yeah, Tim McNamara, and I'm from the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
I do own a lot nearby, and so just out of curiosity, I don't think I may have caught this at the beginning, are they looking to do a single-family or a two-family in the back of the lot?
The.
Okay, because it seemed to me that it was like a two-family or.
So the application.
Confused.
Yeah.
Trying to follow along, that's all.
Yeah. The application was for a use variance to construct a two-family dwelling. It's not something that can be allowed. We're not allowed to allow it. And so the discussion we just had was whether we could allow, consider this under, as a variance of the dimensional requirements and other requirements of a accessory dwelling unit, so that it would be an attached apartment to a single-family home. That would be a little bigger than would be, well, a lot bigger than would be allowed by right.
And are you suggesting that it would be a, that they would have to attach it to their existing home? existing home or?
It would, it would have to be all one structure.
Okay.
And there's no structure there yet.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's very hard to explain.
All right. Is there, we have, I'm just going to check the attendees online and I don't think we have any. I'm like going to go to board comment at this point because what I just did was very far and wide from the application that was submitted. And I think Mr. McLaughlin is going to make a comment on that or something else.
I have a question to help us make a determination. According to what I read in the bylaw, a rear lot requires forty feet of frontage and the driveway from the street to the lot has to be forty feet wide at all points. Am I missing something?
So not that I know of, but I don't see that within the zoning determination, did you?
No.
Yeah.
But it's in the zoning bylaws.
Yeah. And so was this treated as an infill lot?
I, I never...
That commissioner is no longer with us, so before I went even entertain anything tonight, I think this needs to be revisited by the applicant to the building, the present building commissioner for determination.
In order to get the hearing, we had to go through that. And to address your concern, we had a professional surveyor prepare the site plan here. And they always check the zoning for the project ahead of time. So I feel very confident that if there was a question about the driveway, he would have addressed it to us because he's addressed other questions as we progress with this project. So I'm not sure what to say about that.
I'm not either and I'm, the surveyors are human.
I rely on the surveyor to let me know if there's a problem.
So I just, you know, I can show you in the bylaw if you'd like to see it, but I couldn't move it, I couldn't...
What does it say again, sir?
With...
This chair is...
Okay, I'd be happy to read it or point to the section if you'd like to read it.
I, if you would, I, I would like to do that. I, I'm also but going to point out that I don't think we're headed for a decision on this tonight. What we just talked about was not what was advertised. And, you know, I don't feel that we've given the public adequate notice of what you're requesting. So I would like to engage in a little bit more discussion to give some guidance of how to resolve because I think this is probably headed for continuance. It's not headed in my mind for a vote this evening, so.
So if we withdraw this application without prejudice and apply again, just put the relief that we asked you for, the relief on the amount of square footages for the accessory unit and apply again for a special permit?
Well, yes, because what you've, no, it's still a variance, but it's not a use variance. It's a dimensional variance.
Which is allowing a residential district.
Which is something that can be considered, right? We don't have the ability to consider a use variance.
Correct.
So I, I'm going to suggest that that's where this heads, but I'm also going to say I don't, I don't understand why this is a buildable lot given the width of that driveway. There may be a reason that I just, is not coming to mind. It's always can happen, but I think that issue should be checked as you're doing this application with the building commissioner.
Mr. Patterson, understanding?
And just so that you could do some research, you want to look under 181.75, okay? That's rear lot provisions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your input and assistance and concern and interest and the direction that we should probably follow. Thank you very much.
So would you like to withdraw this or would you like to continue? I'm, I'm going to tell you right now, as a use variance, we can't, we can't even consider it.
You already expressed that. So I think it'd be smart for us to withdraw without prejudice and come back again with a new petition for relief on the dimensional requirement.
All right. Then unless a board member has another comment they want to make before we go, okay? Did you have a question?
I just have a brief question, ma'am. You mentioned your concern about whether or not this lot would be buildable. I, I did a majority of the zoning research myself and I'm just curious, what exactly would make it not buildable if it's a rear lot?
So it's, it's the frontage issue that brings the concern to my attention, but if we go to 181.75...
Yes.
Yep.
And specifically 181.7525.
Well, I think we might have to... Ask for an appeal on that driveway as well, then if that's the case.
So the, so what you should do if you do need other dimensional relief through a variance, make sure you put all of the relief you requested in the petition, so.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Say something?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say for the record that the previous owner of the property, he owned the house to, if you're looking at it from the street, he owned the house to the right and he owned the lot. And then we ended up buying the lot. He was already issued a building permit years ago to build a single-family home by the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
He's going to look it up right now. I'm sure he has a building permit.
So if a building permit is, so number one, dimensional requirements change. And I don't know if that's leading to an issue, but obviously a building permit doesn't last for more than two years, so, yeah.
Could I see that map real quick?
So when it comes time to revisit, what is your address?
Thank you, sir.
The house you live in?
I live at 487 Mechanic.
487 Mechanic.
All right.
And what color is the house?
Like a pale green.
And then the strip of land is to the right?
No, it's directly behind.
Behind. The access strip is to the right of your house if I'm looking at it?
It's to the right, correct.
Yes.
To the right of you.
Yes. We're out of directions.
It's amazing where you come across. This is like a garage. This is on the right of me.
Yes.
Has to be.
The other issue too is if you have two non-conforming lots that are owned in contiguous, they're supposed to merge to make less non-conforming.
Right, but the common law they have is conforming.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. They have a small lot that they can build on that. It just seems like it should be fair to everybody that owns a house, you know?
Told you to bring that.
You have the guys inside this stuff.
We're just making, putting it on the record.
Just follow the guide.
Huh?
You have to follow the book.
Of course. But then you got to apply what's reasonable to the situation too, you know? We have the same problem at our board all the time. And some of the bylaws, we try to update them, but it's enormous task.
I'm going to find the answer.
Okay. Appreciate the time. All right. Well, no going.
It's a good story.
Okay.
She's going to get us the answer.
Say what?
We're going to get an answer.
To see if I can participate.
On a question.
Oh.
For now.
Oh, you're not a direct bidder, are you?
Not a direct.
Not a direct.
Oh, okay.
I'm right here in the corner.
All right.
That's the tip of a fourteen acre parcel that I live at.
I see. Okay. Well, we are quite a ways away, I guess.
Were you noticed?
I wasn't noticed.
It's usually five hundred.
Beyond three hundred feet. It's five.
Well, you're a whole separate zoning district away too.
Can I mention something on here? Can I just mention something on here real quick that I actually didn't mark out? So this building down the street, it's just, just down the street right here, 513 Mechanic Street. From everything that I can see here, that appears to be a two-family building. I have a photograph in my laptop if you want.
Yes, I know the one.
The one with two balconies out front. That appears to be a two-family. It's been there a long time. No one family's out.
You're right.
Yeah. Pre-existing non-conforming.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
True.
That's what that is.
Well, yeah, and then of course the bylaws have changed over the years too, so.
That building was built around 1900. I saw 1922 on the ZSZ database, but around that, around that era.
Margin for error. Pretty old.
Just wanted to bring that up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again very much. And I know it's been a long evening.
I'm making a note on ZBA 20, 2024-7 for Garrett Patterson at 4081 Mechanic Street with a request for leave to withdraw.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the leave to withdraw is granted without prejudice. And I suggest you talk to our interim building commissioner Felix Zamel and kind of readdress these issues and see if the new petition can be submitted. And then I'm just going to ask Mr. Gallagher to step up for a moment and tell me whether his parcel is within the circle. It's five hundred foot circle?
Oh, okay. Where are we? Where is the Burbank campus?
Down here.
Yeah, no, I'm all set then.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're not within the five hundred foot circle, Mr. Gallagher?
Probably at seven hundred feet, so.
Mr. Gallagher has no obstruction or conflict of interest in his vote. Okay, thank you for coming. Have a good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
That was quick work.
All right. We're going to call the next matter, which is ZBA 24-8, 38 Jeanette Street. This is a request for a dimensional variance under section 181.93 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to erect a six by four point one-two foot porch.
I wrote for Dennis. I just was invited to a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thanks for coming down.
So I just wanted to say here, see how close.
Nice to meet you. Very good. All right.
Just some updating.
Thank you. Do you have a, did you kindly bring a member, one for each board member?
Ah, yes, I did.
Thank you.
Only because of one line.
Thanks, Tim.
All right. So again, this is ZBA 24-8, 38 Jeanette Street. This is a request for a dimensional variance under section 181.93 to erect a six by four point one-two porch on the front of the existing single-family structure encroaching the minimum setback required from twenty-five feet, leaving twenty-one feet pursuant to 181.416. All right. So, welcome to the meeting, sir.
Good evening again.
Your name and city of residence?
I am Tim McNamara. I am a resident of the city of Pittsburgh and I'm also the general contractor on this job.
Okay. And can you tell us about what you're looking for here today?
Yeah, so we're looking for a variance, dimensional variance to move closer to the road. A little bit of back history on how we've gotten here today. In place was originally an uncovered porch. We applied for a building permit, which was approved with a covered porch on it. So we were under the understanding that we could proceed and that we were not encroaching or in need of a variance. About a month and a half later, after constructing it upon our rough inspection, along with other things that we're doing at the residence, we were issued a denial letter. And it came to our attention that, well, actually, we were given a denial letter and told that we would need a special permit. Mercedes kindly reached out to me and let me know that it's actually going to be a variance. And so that's the reason why I'm giving you the information now that is a little bit different than the original information that I gave you. And so it was our understanding that because we were not moving any closer to the street and building in the exact same spot, that we were going to be okay. And so obviously, that's not the case. So I just have a letter here that's slightly different than what you guys originally saw. And to address hardship for my customer who I'm representing tonight, who could not be here, they had originally asked me to give a covered porch because the water had been splashing on their front porch and causing damage to their sill and rim joists on the front of the home. So they were looking for a covered porch so that they could stop water from splashing and creating rot, as well as just being able to enter the home without being rained on. So those are kind of the simple type of hardships and reasons that we're looking for. And additionally, it's in keeping with the neighborhood. I'd say about fifty percent of the homes on that block also have front porches that look exactly the same that is on there. I have in pictures the rot that was occurring, the repairs that we've already made, the current condition in which it sits in today until we get approval, and some pictures of the other houses in the neighborhood, but not all of them, if you drove down the street, you'd see that even more than the ones that we pictured are, are just the same and encroach on the variances, encroach on the setbacks as well.
I'm going to go to public comment mainly because I don't think there is any. Is there any person here who would like to make a comment on this petition on for or And we have no attendees online. And do we have any communications from city departments? No? Okay. I have a particular question about some, a provision of the zoning ordinance I'm going to look up while I let Mr. Talbot ask some piercing and insightful questions of our applicant.
Question's not really for the applicant, I guess. It would be for the rest of the board.
Okay.
Would, would the stairs not be exempt under 181.4212?
It's exactly the section that I was going to look at, yes. So uncovered steps, walkways, ramps, or terraces, bulkheads, chimneys, blah, 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 shall be exempt from the setback requirements. That is 181.4212. And as I understand it, the landing is covered.
Correct.
The steps from the landing are uncovered.
Correct.
And the landing does not encroach any more than the previous...
Any more than the previous structure, but there was no, there was no roof over it previously. So the landing is the exact same and the steps are the exact same. It's a little bit wider, which doesn't encroach on, on any side setbacks, but it's the same depth and the stairs are the same depth. It all lands in the same part, but over that landing, there is a roof that wasn't there before.
Does the landing encroach or only the steps?
Just the landing. The land, the...
So is the...
It's, it's built in the exact same footprint that it was built in previously.
But because the previous steps were steps, they were exempt, they were not reconstruction of an existing structure, so it's a new violation of the setback?
Correct.
And it's exactly twenty-five feet to the house? Is that basically the...
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have a certified plot plan. We're going over what was there and that's the reason why we're actually asking for a couple of extra feet so that we don't have to necessarily provide an as-built or, or a certified plot plan.
Okay. I got it. I got it good. Do you have it, Mr. Talbot?
I think so.
Yeah. It's, if the prior steps had been covered and all we had was a new landing and a new cover and steps that stuck further out, then they would be exempt. But the prior structure being exempt didn't violate the setback, so we don't have a pre-existing non-conforming structure to work off of what it is.
Which was, I believe, the misunderstanding between a special permit and a variance and the reason the first denial letter was given to us and why we're looking for a variance now versus...
This should go on a zoning questions trick exam. All right. Any other comment, Mr. Talbot?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I had the exact same question. Mr. Gallagher, any comment?
Uh, no comment other than, well, I guess I do have a comment then. It's in keeping with everything else that's in the neighborhood and it's certainly not detrimental in my opinion, so.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, this is a minimal request. Isn't there a provision for front yard exceptions? That would be a permit versus a variance?
Well, that's kind of what we were just looking at. Well, that's kind of what we were just looking at, 4212. This is in the front yard, not the rear yard. So, that's one of the issues. In 4216, we do have a special permit available where at least 50% of the existing buildings fronting on the same street have this... On the same block and within a distance of 150 feet of the lot have less than the required front yard depth, then we may authorize the average front yard depth, but in no case less than 10 feet. And then you would need to show us that issue. So, we have... And then the other thing is, of course, we're not going to be able to vote on that tonight because that's not what was advertised.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, can you... Would you say that there is a hardship due to an existing structure on the property?
Yes, I would. An existing structure, well, yes, the steps that were there were allowing water to splash onto their home and created detriment to the home, which created rot that we had to repair.
And you can't make those steps meet the setbacks covered because you can't move the house back?
Correct.
And the house is exactly 25 feet?
Correct.
Okay. So, as you know, with a variance, we have to find an issue that creates a hardship due to the soil, the shape of the lot, the topography, or an existing structure. Those are the four things we have to base our relief on. Where the request is so minimal in nature, it's really for that four feet that is the landing. And it is impossible to... Well, not impossible, but certainly substantially financially difficult to move the existing structure. I think I could be inclined to find that we had grounds to consider the variance. Any other board member have a comment on that issue?
Just to build upon, this is an extremely minimal request. There is no foundation being poured. There is no increase in the structure. It is simply a short roof overhang. And it's not out of character in the neighborhood. If you've gone through the neighborhood, and as the applicant has demonstrated through photos, that it's a common building design within the neighborhood itself. And can I confirm? No, but visually, it appears as though there are other homes within the neighborhood that have similar setbacks.
I would agree, and pictures were provided, and I did see the examples in the neighborhood. Really, my only concern is I don't want to set a precedent for variance granting, but I think within the circumstances, there is a legitimate cause to deem this appropriate under that statute, which requires us to find one of those four issues. So, any other board comment on this? Okay. Then I'd like to, unless you have anything else to add, close the public hearing.
No, I did just want to ask real quick. Did you say that we would not be able to vote on it tonight?
If we looked at this under the special permit provisions, we would not be able to vote on it because...
It's not applicable.
It's not advertised as a special permit. It was...
But we are going to look at it as a variance.
I think we're going to have a look at it as a variance.
Okay, understood, thank you. No other comments.
All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing without objection. I'm going to ask if any board member would like to make a statement on the allowability or any conditions. Seeing none. I'm going to look for a motion on the allowance of the dimensional variance as requested.
Make the motion on the ZBA 2024-8 for the property owned by Yvonne Marson at 38 Jeanette Street for a dimensional variance as requested.
We should state the amount of relief granted.
And the relief that we are granting is going to reduce the front from 25 feet to 21 feet.
Great.
Can I, real quick, make a comment? We actually asked for six feet. In the event that we only get the four feet that we're looking for, we're going to need to do a full survey and site plan. The building department will require it from us, and that's the reason that we're looking for two feet beyond what's there. Anything within inches, they're going to require us to prove to them that it's not within a few inches.
So, it's not that you're planning to construct a six-foot... It's that they want... They don't want to be that close?
Correct, and I mean, the structures actually are already built. It's not changing. It's our intent to finish the project, though.
Okay. Do you wish to modify the request, the motion?
As requested.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, variance is granted.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do you have an issue next time? Take a look at that other section, because it's a special permit, not a variance. It's a lot easier for us to grant.
Yep.
It's just that you need some data on the neighborhood to support it that you're not going to have tonight, even if we did advertise it that way.
Yeah, yeah, and that might go back to financial feasibility as well. I don't know what it would go... What that would entail to approve all of that, but, you know, worth looking into. Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
All right, we have to address the last matter that I called, and the applicant was not here. See Mercedes, I misplaced the agenda again.
ZBA 2024-5.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Calling ZBA 24-5, 672-678-WATERSTREET, request for a special permit under Section 181.313-D12 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to open an auto repair motor vehicle repair shop pursuant to Section 181.94, located in the neighborhood business district. Now, there is nobody here to represent this petition, and we have no attendees online. And have we had any communication? Okay. Does any board member have inclination on how we should handle this application?
Madam Chair, I went out and visited the site this afternoon and spoke to the property owner. He showed me a text message saying that the applicant was not willing to go further with it and had me read it. So, I'm not surprised that he didn't show up.
Okay. Any other comments?
That this property was before the board some years ago for the application for the present owner to operate the motor vehicle sales. I know a key component to it because the number of vehicles for sale was that they had the ability to utilize parts of the building for auto repair. You know?
Recony.
I would really be reluctant to look at subdividing this property for multiple uses. But I think the more pressing issue is the fact that the applicant's not here. As the board has been stood up on a regular basis, especially on a first-time application with no courtesy, you know, be willing to either vote or give leave to withdraw.
Anything, Mr. Talbot?
No.
Likewise, I would be inclined to vote to give leave to withdraw without prejudice on the property, which I did visit. It's located up the slope, but right next to our brand-new lovely rail trail. And the rear of the property is being used for trash storage. And there's trash down the slope. And while there are other issues in that area with the visual presentation of our rail trail that affect visual presentation, if we were in the future to consider an application on this site, I would definitively want some cleanup of what's going on there and would hope that the owner kind of... I know it's difficult to pick up trash that falls down a steep slope like that. And before the rail trail went in, there was no one in the rear to look at it. But I would like to see a little more care taken with the maintenance of the property.
Agreed. Make a motion on the ZBA 2024-5 for Jonathan Calcerata and the property at 672 to 678 WATERSTREET to give leave to withdraw.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, that is granted leave to withdraw without prejudice. So, that concludes our agenda for tonight. If anyone does watch to the end of this meeting, I want to just remind you of two things. First of all, despite our very challenging agenda tonight, it is 10:02, and we've made it through. And I would like to congratulate both my board members and Ms. Mata on helping us get through it, as well as everyone who kept their presentations concise today. Secondly, as a reminder, if there is anyone interested, just to make sure, the public hearing on the 72 to 80 Franklin Road matter submitted by Spectrum Health Inc. is scheduled for Thursday, March 14th, at 6:00 p.m. And if you do choose to attend, we will see you there. Otherwise, I hope everyone has a great evening, and thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was really quick.
He's learning.